Good evening, everybody. We have just come out of executive session. I will call this meeting to order. It is a little past the hour. It was supposed to start at six. We're a little behind schedule. April 17th, town council meeting here at the D'Leo Senior Center. It's being recorded by WCAT. I don't think it's going out live because we have a problem technically, but it'll be recorded to be played back. Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor Monchory, please lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Today, prior to coming here, many of us went over to a wake for Jake Vassal. Jake is, was 38 years old. He passed away on the 14th of April. One of our DPW workers and certainly a tremendous town employee. I didn't know him personally, but many, many people have, you know, told me that he's done a fantastic job. He also represented the union as the union president. So, I'd like to hope that our thoughts and prayers with his family and take a moment of silence for everybody. The minutes of the April 3rd meeting of the town council, I want to take a motion to approve.
Motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. At this time, we'll reopen a public hearing continued from April 3rd. Town council to fund $142,100 for 25 percent design engineering for the town of Winthrop Revere Street TIP project. I'll open it up to comments, public comments. Anybody would like to speak on behalf of it? Yes. Julia.
I'm Julia Wallace, Precinct 2, also Chair of Transportation Advisory Committee. Tonight, on behalf of the committee, I wasn't able to make the meeting on April 3rd and came a couple of weeks ago in which this topic was tabled. So, I'm excited just to be able to obviously vocalize our very strong support for approving this funding request for the TIP. It's been a long time since Winthrop's been on the TIP. Been in consideration for those capital funds and it's quite frankly an opportunity we really can't afford to miss. We believe that the opportunity to spend $142,100 for initial engineering towards what would otherwise be a $3.5 million-plus project is an investment, like I said, that we can't afford not to make. We hope you will support the town manager's request to authorize these funds for the TIP tonight. And just, you probably already received my, our letter a few weeks ago, but just to hit a few of the key points about why we feel this is so important. It's really not just about a roadway. It's about quality of life, safety, health, environmental sustainability. Revere Street is the closest thing we have to a throughway. It's probably the most heavily trafficked, not just by cars and buses, but by pedestrians. People probably would bike on it if it was safer. And not just pedestrians, but our most vulnerable people on foot. Seniors, children trying to walk to school, both the high school, middle school, and the elementary school. As we all know, that's the only way to get to the elementary school. So, if we were to make it safer, more accessible, we could definitely cut down on congestion and improve the health and quality of life of our children. We actually did a forum here at the senior center last month with Massachusetts Smart Growth Alliance with seniors to address, to sort of do a listening session on what some of their key issues were in town around housing and transportation. And walkability was by far number one. Actually, Councilor Monchory was there as well, Senator Monchory, and we were blown away by the, by the outpouring of, quite frankly, complaints, even though we weren't in a place to actually take those complaints, just from walking from a lot of the senior housing to the marketplace and to the senior center. So, to approve this project is a strong benefit to our very strong senior population. So, we recognize that finances are tough. We kept the budget. We know that we're up against a lot right now in this town and a lot of that is scary and questionable. But, we do feel that the condition of this road is dire and this is an opportunity that we can't afford to miss. So, I would love to support you in any way I can in making sure that we stay in the running with MPO and helping make sure that our project gets selected. So, thanks to Joe for his support and all his hard work on this and to Terry for being behind it as well. And, thank you very much. Please approve the project.
Thank you, Julia.
Good evening, Joel O'Prease in 5. I'd just like to reinforce what Julia said and make a couple of additional points, which is to emphasize how difficult it is to get on the TIP. And the fact that Winthrop is now finally on the TIP and is getting in excess of 90 percent of the costs of these roadways paid for by state funds is a big, big, big step. And not following through, I think, would be detrimental to the hope that we could get additional projects downstream on the TIP. So, I laud not only the folks that Julia mentioned, but also the Transportation Committee that really was at the forefront of pushing for this. So, I do urge you to fund this important project. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Mark Wallace, Precinct 2, also Winthrop Marketplace owner. Last year, we had four elderly people slip and fall on the sidewalks because of all the cracks. This project would really help. We're getting a lot of people, a lot of seniors that are coming in that are having really problems. And we won't even get into what we're facing right now on Central Street. But, right now, this project would really, really help. It would make customers a lot easier and it's something that I definitely feel we should go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else? Okay, any of the councils wish to make a statement or comments? If not, I'll close out this portion of the hearing. There'll be further discussion in the agenda as we go down the agenda. General public comment? I'll open it up to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. John Vitalegiano from Precinct 5. Just like to make one comment if I might. Like, offer my, my strong support for the memo that I was submitted to the council and included in tonight's agenda package from Councilor Engman regarding her strong suggestion that the finance reports distributed to the town council be significantly augmented with a, with a great deal more additional support material than has been, than has been the progress. I think it's a terrific memo. Well thought out. It would go a long way to resolving some of the outstanding and current financial difficulties that the, that the town now faces in many respects. I thought it was well done and I appreciate that and urge the council to pass it, pass her and approve her memo as soon as possible.
I speak to you tonight in the form of question and suggestion. Back in the early days, I was a member of the school building committee. And during that process, then Superintendent Maserro came to us and explained and expounded upon the virtues of an extremely high-tech auditorium and how wonderful this would be. And it would be bringing in opportunities, i.e., such as Waltim does with their, their Regal Theater, the Lynn Auditorium does with their different performances. And this would be a long-term benefit. You brought me to mind when you spoke at the meeting on the 3rd about the middle school, the auditorium, that it could house theater and excite. My feeling is, when we first heard this and we were all in favor of having this state-of-the-art auditorium housed in the school, that this would be advantageous to the folks that were coming into town. Early performances, things for the youngsters in the afternoon. There were so many opportunities that were presented. I would like to know, has the school committee, and I would ask you, Mr. President, you're serving on that board, does the school committee entertain any kind of a subcommittee? Has there been anything done or set the wheels in motion to entertain how to go about and bring this kind of venue into the town so that they can have our restaurants, they can explore, they can do a number of things? I would like to know, and I would like to suggest that the council, being the governing body, oversee and ask to have a committee formed to look into the feasibility of this.
Now, are you speaking about the old Memorial Auditorium? Or are you speaking about the new school?
No, sir. I'm talking about the new high school, the auditorium with their state-of-the-art everything, all the bells and whistles that are there. And it was told to us back when it was first proposed in the building committee by Mr. Maserro that this would be very advantageous to put this kind of investment into that for the future venues. And I'd like to know, is it sitting on somebody's shelf? Is there a committee formed? Is there something done?
I'm not aware of any committee at all.
Do you think maybe that it would be? I know we've got a lot more important matters before you tonight.
I do know this, Roddy, that that auditorium is almost booked continuously with either, you know, people coming in and doing concerts or doing, you know, concerts for the schools, competitions. Also, they do a lot of, they outsource it a lot to dancing schools to do their, you know, their dance recitals. So, it's booked up a lot, but I don't know if there's any active program.
Does that kind of booking bring in revenue to help support?
It just brings in revenue to offset the cost of the operation.
Of that particular program and support that? But likes, i.e., CAS are coming in. Or, yeah, so we're not doing anything to present ourselves?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I would like to ask maybe that you consider it?
Thank you. Joe?
Variety of topics. Number one, I support the notion that Councilor Engman provided with respect to written documentation. I do believe on the auditorium issue, we should get a utilization chart that shows us exactly what the auditorium is being used from, what spare moments are there, because that can begin to have a discussion about programming that space and bringing in folks that can generate revenue and some excitement in the town. Let me go through a couple of comments. First is a very small one. Construction notice for Pleasant Street, to me, that came out to citizens. It was a very misleading public notice. The only contact person was a person from the construction company. When I called the construction company to suggest that the document can be improved, by example, there were no limits on Pleasant Street in terms of where the paving was starting, where the paving was ending. And Pleasant Street is a pretty long street. They issued a revised one. The revised one was fine. It had limits. It misspelled Sergeant Street, which is difficult to do. But it also put Pleasant Street in the town of, in the city of Everett. And then there was no contact language for anybody. We've seen that in other cases where contractors are doing work in town streets. It may be behalf on a utility, it may be town work. In every case, there should be a town official responsible and their phone number in cases of emergency are questioned by citizens. Unless we're paying that contractor specifically to engage in public relations and representing the town fully, we need to have a town official on these things. This is just poorly done. This is the document and my comments. It's okay to use the word "through" -T-H-R-U, but I prefer to use the formal English -T-H-R-O-U-G-H. Second, I believe there's a motion to consider borrowing for the town center project. I think it's highly ill-advised. We don't know what the town center project is going to cost. And I'm gonna say a few things. In the last three times I've asked these questions publicly, I keep getting responses, "Oh, look on the town website." These items are not on the town website. So, again, we do not have a construction phasing plan for the center. When you don't have a construction phasing plan, you're telling the contractor, "Do whatever you want, however you want. Block off sidewalks, block off driveways, take rid of parking spaces, make it impossible for a business to conduct their business for weeks at a time." There's a, there's a saying in the construction industry, "Mystery equals money." If you don't declare exactly what the limits of my work are and it's a mystery, and then all of a sudden later you tell me, "Oh, you can't do this, can't do that," cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. I'm gonna give you change orders and claims like crazy. You cannot possibly know what this job is gonna cost until you do a construction phasing plan. And by the way, you have to do that with the input of the local residents and businesses. So, please do it. Stop saying it's done. It's never been done. I'll give you another one, which is, I want the procurement history of the engineer. How do we hire the engineer? How much are we paying them? What are the change orders? What are the changes in scope? We need written documentation similar to Councilor Engman's request. We need written documentation about how this job creeped up. Written documents that are in the public domain that should be made available to the taxpayer. We need documentation that the stormwater runoff has been peer reviewed to meet climate change and new regulations respecting conditions of the outflow. There are new state regulations kicking in July 1st. I keep asking for peer review. I keep telling peer review is on the website. The peer review that's on the website is simply that the engineer's calculations that he made were made correctly. Whether or not the underlying assumptions include climate change and heavier rainfalls and adequate storage capacity and then treatment before it's released into the, into the harbor, consistent with July 1st, 2018, new regulations is a mystery. I can't find it anywhere. Responsible engineering firm should have done it. The last thing we wanna do is engage and investing in this stuff and then find out we're non-compliant and then tell the town fathers we have to come back and do it again. So, I urge you, don't borrow. You're gonna get into what's called negative arbitrage because you're gonna stop paying interest on a loan and you're not gonna put the money to use because you are not anywhere close to preparing to put that job out for bid. Now, those are the smaller matters. Let's get to the larger matters here. I think I have great, great, great sympathy for each and every one of you. You have full-time jobs. You do this as a volunteer. You try to do the best thing you can, that you possibly can. I am stunned, stunned by the silence with respect to the lawsuit this town has lost. It's the second discriminatory lawsuit against a fellow town employee that we've had in the last 20 years. If you don't have a sister, a daughter, a mother, a niece, and you don't care about the kind of treatment that they're subjected to, I don't know what to say. But, let's just imagine that's not an issue. Five million bucks for the two discrimination cases we know that we have had to pay. Five million dollars of my money and taxpayer money have gone to that. And there's no sense here yet that we need to change the way that we do business and that there's gonna be consequences for that kind of behavior. I don't understand the silence. So, I'm hoping when each of you return to the ballot box in a year, in two years, and someone says, "When a woman was being discriminated against, or a man, or anybody, and it cost them their dignity and it cost the town taxpayers more than five million dollars, God knows what else has been settled out there, and you chose to stay on the side of silence, which is to sense that this is okay?" God bless you in front of the tax, in front of the voters. I'm just incredulous about it. So, now, let's go on to the next thing. This town needs professional town management. I understand there's a town manager search going on. It needs to be more transparent. We need to know who's on the selection committee. What is the role of the selection committee? What are the limits of the selection committee? Are we gonna follow the best practices of other towns and have the final three candidates be interviewed in a public session so we can see, all of us can see, what choices are before the council? Let's shed some light on this process. Let's get as much information out there as possible. I think the more you do behind the curtain. There was a woman, I can't recall her name, who eloquently said, "The trust is broken between town government and citizens. The way to cure it is to have a full, transparent process for the next town manager. Accelerate it. Do it immediately, but make sure we can all see and understand what's happening."
Thank you, Mr. Iel. Stephanie Rakia, Precinct 6. This evening, I would like to read a letter that One Winthrop sent to the Winthrop Transcript for publication last week. We are disappointed that it was not printed. We are aware of at least two other letters of similar sentiment sent to the paper, also not published. I am reading this letter before you today so that our voices may be heard in a public forum. The letter was edited and revised by many and signed by 20. There were others who contributed to or voiced support of this letter, however, did not feel comfortable signing and voiced fear. We felt strongly about speaking out against discrimination as silence was not an option. Silence can only benefit the systems perpetuating discrimination and never will benefit ones being discriminated against. I would also like to acknowledge that we recognized that good people are named in the Rakow versus Town lawsuit, which we understand is in appeal, and that those people have contributed in positive ways to Winthrop. However, the systematic discrimination in Winthrop can no longer be ignored and discriminatory behavior must be addressed. We do believe that expediting the creation of the Diversity, Inclusion, and Accessibility Committee supported by Councilor Thordo in this effort should be a small part of this change. Here's the letter to the editor. One Winthrop was created, created in the spirit of bringing our community together and seeks to counteract incidents of discrimination in all of its ugly forms. We have heard from persons in authority in our town of Winthrop that discrimination, excuse me, that Winthrop does not have a discrimination problem. But they are glad that One Winthrop exists. One Winthrop cannot remain silent in this time of moral conflict. This week proved that Winthrop does indeed have a discrimination problem, a big one, in the form of a $2 million settlement awarded to Sergeant Judy Rakow versus the town of Winthrop for gender discrimination. This is actually the third time in the past 20 years that two separate female members of the police force successfully sued the town for gender discrimination. These lengthy court settlement documents show a pattern of gender discrimination that has existed for decades and is built into the culture of not only the police department, but also the town. It is actually quite difficult to prove discrimination in court based solely on sex. However, the judge remarked in the Rakow case that the monetary award was high because the discrimination was blatant and represented a pattern of repeated discriminatory practices over time. The harsh judgment was meant to be a wake-up call for the town that should be heated. Policy and procedure must change now. This is Winthrop's Me Too, time's up moment. No longer will it be our town's cultural norm to treat women differently because of their sex or gender. No longer will it be acceptable for men in positions of power to instill fear and intimidate for speaking out about unfair practices. Winthrop should immediately adopt a meaningful and actionable framework to review cases of reported discrimination and a zero tolerance policy for any kind of discrimination or harassment. This policy would institute mandatory trainings for all town employees on a regular basis, create procedures and systems to ensure zero tolerance for discrimination and harassment, and create clear consequences for violation of the zero tolerance policy. We urge and invite others who have experienced discrimination to come forward. Let your voices be heard. Change may only happen when we come together and shared experiences to demonstrate, with shared experience, experiences to demonstrate a need for change. One Winthrop believes that there should not be anyone in leadership positions in our government who have engaged in, practiced, or been complicit in discriminatory practices. We would call on those named in the lawsuit to relinquish their positions of authority to allow for new leadership to emerge who is unaffiliated with this settlement. It will be good for the town, its development and reputation, to move forward and embrace equity and inclusion of all persons in its institutions. Given that the search for town manager is once again open, we would reiterate our request to, at a minimum, identify, interview, and consider candidates of color and women, candidates who can bring change and create a different perspective to the town and ensure that we increase transparency, inclusion, and eradicate our culture of discrimination.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Yes. I don't mean to step on her applause. I didn't mean to do that. Hi, Jean Margio, Precinct 4. The first thing I wanna say is I am not speaking as a medical reserve person. I am speaking as a citizen. I never had the opportunity yet to congratulate all of you for putting yourselves out there to become members of the council to help the citizens of this community. I know what it's like and the time it involves, the time away from your family, and some of the compliments and not-so-nice compliments that you will receive over your span of time and the years that you serve. So, with that being said, I hope you will give me some time because I was away when we had the forum and I have things to say. First of all, I watched the video on TV and I was very happy to see so many citizens stand up. Didn't matter what they stood up for, but citizens finally had a good voice to speak out. I have sometimes felt that as good as a council representative former government is, sometimes we lose the conversation of the people. I hope one of the things that you will not forget as council people is that you are here to serve the citizens, that you are here to have an open mind, that you are here to listen and not have any preconceived decisions. You have to come to this table, not with something already said that this is what I want. You have to listen to the people and see what they want. With that being said, I have some complaints. First of all, I know tonight at the forum, there's gonna be a major conversation about the budget, about how much money that we need to continue running our town. And I understand that. All things being said, I do understand that. But some of the things that I heard at the forum, I have to disagree with. And let me begin. As a former physical education teacher who also dealt in recreation, who worked in the middle school building and used the ice skating rink for over 10 years, that building is not worth saving. I also feel that at this particular time, and when I was a member of the council, I know this for a fact, we threw a lot of money into the rink. We fixed up the gym over time. And right now, we do have a facility for the rink and for recreation. We don't need a swimming pool right now. And right now, based on the finances of the town, I have to say this honestly, even though people aren't gonna like it, the recreation portion of what was presented should be put on the back burner. We have more important things right now that we need to do. We have brand-new beautiful schools. We have a $9 million sports field. We have put new tennis courts in. We do have programs for seniors. We do have programs in our recreation department that can, for now, suffice. I'm gonna speak against the ferry. We do not support a ferry financially. We have lost money all the years it has been in service. I have heard members of the council and other people say the amount of money that we have lost over the years on the ferry. One figure that I heard was $400,000 over time. $400,000 could have bought machinery for our Department of Public Works that we have to go out and borrow equipment now because we don't have the equipment for our own department to use when we have snowstorms, et cetera. We didn't have, we could have used some of that money to fix up the playgrounds that people are talking about that need to be fixed. But we continue to run a ferry primarily because people think it's nice to go out on a sunset cruise, and it is. And those are always sold out. But if those are always sold out, we can get a company to come here to run sunset cruises and we don't have to pay for the boat and all the maintenance and all the employees that go with it. We could save ourselves a lot of money. We don't support it as a commuter boat. And people who do use it don't like the fact that they have to go to Quincy first and then go to Boston. So, it's really not being a successful operation as far as a commuter ferry is concerned. The next thing, I want you to think. Think about this, this winter that we have had that doesn't wanna let go. Think about last year and think about the year before that. And I could say, think about a lot of winters. about a lot of winters. Who are the people that go out there? Who are the people who, when it was 28 degrees, went out to rescue people because we had power outages, we had people stranded, we had people who needed our help? And those people, our safety people, our fire and our police, go out in 28-degree weather, and they come back to a building that's 30 degrees. What are we saying to them? They've made over 500 medical aid calls alone to the abus. I can't even give you a number of how many medical aids they've done for our senior housing. The fires that they fight, every power line that goes down, every tree limb that comes down, anything that we need, our public safety is there for us. And yet, we continue to house them in a building that should have been condemned 25 years ago because it's a barn. If it wasn't for the men who held that building together with spit and baling wire, as they say, the building would be condemned officially. They can't keep their equipment there because technically, it's an illegal building. What are we saying to public safety, to police and fire, who put their lives on the line every day for us? That we say, "We're more interested in a swimming pool than we are in a building for our public safety people." I say to you, there is only one use for that old middle school. Tear it down, build a combined public safety building for police and fire with a combined emergency operations center, where the health department can also go in because of the opiate situation, they all work together as a team. And let's say to the safety people, "We believe in you, we know you are there for us, we're going to do this for you because you come first, because you put us first. You put us first over your own lives every single day you go to work." And if we don't do that for them, then we are literally saying to them, "We don't care about you." I hope you have appreciated what I've said. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jean. Guy.
My name is Guy Brandenstein. I live on Trident Avenue. And basically, Jeanie stole my thunder on the ferry, because I was going to say the exact same thing. Basically, every time that ferry leaves the dock, you might as well put a pile of money on the dock and set fire to it, because it has not even broken even once. It's a waste of money. And I haven't come to a lot of meetings, so I've missed bits and parts, but some of the things that she mentioned, like a swimming pool, that's candy. That is the equivalent of candy. And anything like that is candy. She's right about needing the building for the emergency response. Buildings are falling down. She's dead right on that. That's meat and potatoes. That's stuff we need. The gentleman over here was talking about the search for town manager. I'd like to add one minor request to that. There'd be one thing that, for the most part, I'm against, but for something like the town manager, I'm very much for, a residency requirement. Our previous, before the chief, town manager lived, I forget where, Essex? So when he raised our water sewer rates or spent our money, he didn't feel it. No skin off his nose, no problem, it's other people's money, I'm just throwing it out there. If he got bit too, maybe he wouldn't have been quite so happy to spend and raise. What really set me off was when he got that mysterious call in the dark of night about raising our water sewer rates, and I saw the letter that he got. Didn't say anything about the water sewer enterprise, it said, "There was a concern about the enterprise funds." But he dove straight to the water sewer. It could have been the town landing, it could have been the skating rink, it could have been anything. But he jumped straight to the water sewer rates, and our water sewer rates went up again, which you probably are aware that I'm not a big fan of them, because Winthrop was told we'd have the lowest water sewer rates in the system. We've got the highest. We also have one of the biggest per capita water sewer departments, which nobody has yet to explain to me. So maybe those are things that you should look into before looking into candy. Thank you.
Thank you. [applause]
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Vecchia. Frank Costantino, Precinct 2. I just want to reiterate what Jean had said about the fire station and the need for such a public facility. I think the priority for being able to provide the proper facilities for our fire department particularly, but perhaps in a combined facility for fire and police, is really long overdue. It seems to me that the town should give much more attention to the location for the fire department and/or a combined facility. And I think the town should also think about the fact that the existing structures in which the fire department is located could in fact be put up for sale for adaptive reuse. The building in the center, for example, is a historic structure, it's a beautiful brick building, it's literally built like a brick firehouse. Very, very sturdy. I've had the opportunity on many occasions, stopping in there and knowing a number of the fire personnel and the chief, that that would allow for a terrific transformation of housing. That could also be the case with other type of uses for the Shirley Street station. But I think it really is overdue for a new facility to be planned out, to be thought about, to be appropriated for monies, that has nothing to do also with upgrading the equipment, which is also an issue, as far as the chief explained in a previous town council meeting, the need to repair some of the vehicles, the older 20, 25-year-old vehicles that need hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of structural and mechanical work. The other point I want to make is that 20 years ago, I worked on a fire station study committee with a number of my fellow residents, which really went nowhere at the time. Part of that, again, 20 years ago, had to do with issues of financing. Now, if we can find the money for $4 million to do something down in the center, I don't see why we can't appropriate the money and find the resources, particularly with state grants and other resources that come for assisting the development of fire facilities, why we can't get something moving as far as the fire department is concerned. I think the other source of revenue could be the sale of the buildings, once we determine where the facility could be going. I certainly agree with the idea of using the corner location where the old middle school is right now as an ideal use of that particular site and access in and out for all of the vehicles that would be required for both the fire department and the police department. So I would behoove the town council to give this more thought, to perhaps reintroduce a fire study committee, look back at what had been done back 20 years ago, and perhaps move forward with the urgency that is necessary, given the state and the age of the buildings that we have right now. That's where the town's money should be used, that's where we, as taxpayers, would be happy to pay for a new fire station, to be able to support the tremendous work that these firemen do on our behalf. Thank you very much.
Thank you. [applause]
Hi, Paul Serra from Swets, Precinct 5. I'm just going to be redundant with what a lot of people have already said. The town's center infrastructure is falling apart, the police and fire departments are begging for a new facility, the DPW trucks can't pass inspections, the middle school needs to be knocked down, we're paying X amount of dollars to insure it and maintain it, needless, it should have been sold four or five years ago, when we knew we were going to build a new school. So what I'm asking, I know this is very difficult, you guys have been thrown into a hard situation, but we need some leadership, we really do. There's a lot to deal with, we need everybody on board, and I hope you guys can pull it all together and get something done. Thank you.
[applause]
Just really quick, just wanted to speak to the issue of the ferry. As the Transportation Committee Chair, I get asked a lot, "What is your position on the ferry? Are you for it, against it?" I'm sure you all get asked the same question, I just want to turn that question around because it really is irrelevant. It's not yay or nay ferry, it's how are we operating this ferry? The idea of a ferry is fantastic, water transportation is phenomenal, it's the future of transportation in the Boston Harbor, we're so lucky to have a ferry. Can we afford to operate it by ourselves? Absolutely not. Do we have the ridership to sustain it by ourselves? Absolutely not. But can we make this an asset to our town, not just for a transportation source, but even emergency preparedness? A lot of us went to the MBTA workshop a couple of weeks ago and learned, as we all know, we're incredibly vulnerable, we become an island, and that's going to be happening a lot more. To have a water transportation system in place is not just, it should definitely not be a luxury, it should be a use, but also an asset and even a part of our emergency preparedness. So I just want to throw that out there and just put on the record that we are very, we do own this ferry, it's not simple as pulling the plug, I think we all know that there are repercussions of that, I wish it was that easy. We definitely cannot afford to keep going the way we're going now, it's not serving anyone, I mean, it serves some commuters and the schedule's a lot better, but think hard and strategically about how we choose to go forward with the ferry and try to get away from that pro or for or against the ferry. So just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things to think about, Joe Eller, again, Precinct 5. In case you weren't aware of it, if you think about the traffic going through the Ted Williams Tunnel, remember the Big Dig? It was going to solve congestion and it's all filled up again, for anybody who commutes on a regular basis. 65% of the vehicles going through the Ted Williams Tunnel come from Logan Airport. That's a tunnel that belongs to all of us. What's happening at Logan Airport is the traffic coming out of Logan can't get out of the terminals again. This is sort of like pre-Big Dig. The airport continues to grow, congestion's going to get worse, it is in Massport's interest to try to keep people from, Winthrop, from driving through the tunnel. Perhaps they ought to be approached to pay for the town's portion of the deficit. It's sort of one idea. Second idea, and it's a drop in the bucket for their budget, by the way, right? They sneeze at this kind of money. Second idea, town of Quincy, city of Quincy, very cleverly, when the MBTA was announcing that it was rebuilding most of the Red Line, convinced the MBTA and MassDOT, I have a conflict of interest here, so I'm not going to go into complete conflict of interest, to pay for a multi-year mitigation package of ferry service from Quincy to downtown. And because there's only one boat available, that's how the Winthrop boat got into the mix. If you look up onto the north right now, you've got the Washington Street Bridge coming from Charleston into Boston under reconstruction for the next four years, that's in the process of causing major congestion for people coming down 93. They're going to try to flip over to Route 1. When you get over to Route 1, the Tobin Bridge is scheduled for the next four years for redecking. That's going to cause people who have gone from 93 over to 1 and those on 1 to come over to Route 60 or 6A or whatever the hell they call them, a Collin Highway these days. But we're about to see an inundation of traffic coming right by the same place that we want to go and Logan Airport people want to go. What about a construction mitigation package because of highway, not transit, so I don't have a conflict of interest saying this, about highway construction projects, right? Big, I think the Washington Street Bridge is $80 million, I think the redecking of the Tobin Bridge is $120 million. Over that four-year period, a drop in the bucket to get mitigation? This is what I mean about getting the best professional advice we possibly can, gets back to the selection of a town manager and getting a town manager, we should be engaged in those discussions. Other communities do, we don't.
[applause] We have to wait, because we're way behind schedule.
Just to the point of the ferry, by the way, I had mentioned at the April 3 meeting and outlined it in a report that I submitted to you, Ron, for your fellow councilors, having to do with working with the Chamber of Commerce and working with the surrounding businesses in the vicinity of the landing, even the residents there, to be able to bring in, find different type of event businesses that can populate the landing on specific weekends, so that Winthrop becomes a destination. There's a reason for people coming from Boston to come to Winthrop, to enjoy the town, start at the landing, and then circulate around to the beaches or down the point or what have you. Find the means for, together with the Chamber, to bring in food trucks, to bring in different types of entertainment businesses, even if it's just for a weekend, for a certain period of time, but make it a celebration that would help to bring that traffic in without diffusing some of the interest and some of the uses of the landing by boaters, not only within the town, but outside of the town. I also want to mention that the fire study committee that I done was during the tenure of Chief Eddie Haslam, by the way, so that goes back.
Thank you, Frank. Anywhere else? Yes.
Good evening, John Stacioli, Precinct 3. I just wanted to bring to the council's attention that we've been having meetings with Deer Island for the past three years, semi-annual, about the new pier and the more 40-car parking lot they want to put down there. We're kind of at an impasse with them where they're not too sure about what we really want as security and see what's going on down there. So I'm making a suggestion that before they start doing any work down there, that we get in touch with them before June, before they start doing the work, to nail down something either with either the Parks Department or whoever that we can get to help us get that security in place down there. Because think of what you've got there now, you've got 40 cars, and you're going to add another 40, and it's totally wide open down there. There is basically no security. And if we're going to, and then you take the traffic that's going to go back and forth, the use of our roads, it has to be policed, and we need to have some sort of an emergency response unit on island, in case someone has a heart attack or whatever. The response time is ridiculous. And so we need to address this issue before they go ahead and start doing it, because they've got the funding for it now. But the thing that they're not funding is a police presence there, some sort of an annex with, say, a first aid, first response system on island. And that can also help Winthrop, that if there's nothing going on down there, mutual response, they can come and take care of something that's happening down inside the point or up in the beach area. And that's what I'd like to say about it. I'd like to see the town council do something on it before they just say, "Go ahead, let's spend the money," and then there's no funding for any kind of first response or emergency or policing on the island. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Phyllis Hargreaves, Precinct 5. And I went to the website because at the April 3 forum, I asked about the ordinances, the zoning, and a couple of people said, "It's on the website." So I went to the website, and I did find a lot of things on zoning, but I could not find anything that detailed 35 feet for a building past 2010. So I'm asking, can someone direct me to the place in the website where I can find the zoning ordinances that were changed in 2014? I read from, I don't know, 1903 down to 2005, and it was all detailed, how many structures, heights and everything, but I could not find anything past 2010 that listed heights.
Do you want to give us your email over here? We'll send it to you tomorrow.
Great. So I have a question about parking, and who does the ticketing for parking in this town? Did we outsource it, or do we do it?
We do it in-house.
We do it in-house. So I have had no success in getting a police officer or whoever does it to come by when there are cars that are parked and they're not supposed to be. So for example, I called at quarter past 6 last Friday morning, and the person said, "Are you in Winthrop?" "Yeah." This car was parked, no exaggeration, three feet from the curb. It was trash day. There were cars parked on the other side of it. I went through great detail to explain to the person on the phone. I said, "Is there a law that you can't park so far away?" "Well, you know, I don't know. I think it might be 12 inches, but I'm not sure." No one came, the trash truck, God bless the man, he had such a hard time getting down that street. It was 7:30 when they came, so that means from quarter- It was seven-thirty when they came, so that means from quarter past six until seven-thirty, nothing happened. And that's not the first time. I've called on behalf of truck drivers who have to have a near-heart attack backing up and trying to navigate the corner on Somerset Ave because cars parked right at the street level. But we need money in the town? You could have made a goddamn fortune if you came by and ticketed those frigging cars, but nobody does it. Why? Does that mean we don't care? And we put those signs up that says, "Enforced Parking." No parking. What are we doing? Why can't we get cars ticketed?
If you want to give us the dates and times, we'll certainly have the deputy chief look into them.
But I do. I've done it more than once. This is what I'm saying. I keep doing it and I never see any action. And I sit on the porch hoping, but nothing happens.
If you want to give us the dates and times, we'll email you a response with the deputy chief.
Who's the deputy chief?
John Goodwin. Uh, when you get the dates and times, we'll pull the phone records and we'll get you a response.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the website. Can someone tell me where the hell I go to find what I'm looking for?
Just give us your email, we'll send you detailed instructions and we'll send you the two thousand and fourteen ordinances.
Okay. My last question is, do any of you guys ever respond to any comments? Like, you know, like anybody's?
We held the forum two weeks ago.
Mm-hmm. I was there.
We, we operate the meeting according to the Town Charter, okay? Which offers the public to speak at the beginning of the meeting and at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
And there's no cross-examination. We'd be here until midnight. We still have three-quarters of the agenda. So we're taking in everything you're saying.
Okay.
Councilors are, are taking notes, I know. We all care and we're listening. That's what we're here for.
Okay.
But we also have to try to conduct business. We held the forum, people were asking to be able to participate.
Mm-hmm.
So we held this forum, it went, what, until about ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock, yes.
And everybody had an opportunity to speak, and I heard nothing but good things. Um, you know, so we're trying our very best. We have a lot of issues. We're certainly not, uh, taking anything that you say lightly and we continue to work.
Okay, and I appreciate your efforts. I really do. It just, it gets so frustrating.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who's to be here?
I don't know whether we're in the second part or not, but I came here for one reason tonight, this gentleman took up. We do not want forty more things down the point and a big pier. Try to get in or out, especially when you have little children. They come flying down there and flying back. We don't want it in any way at all. Many of us have said, "It is ridiculous." You know, have you been caught down there between somebody who wants to go the wrong way? People coming in don't respect us down there. And the first time that, God forbid, somebody gets hurt by it, this is going to be terrible. And because it's just too much. We don't have the room for it. They can go wherever they want and go fishing. Fishing is wonderful, but I don't want to see forty more cars or all this other stuff down the point where we live and we should be able to say what we want down there. I don't care what the others say.
Thank you.
Carol Gay, Precinct Three. We do not want that pier. If Mass Water Resources has that kind of money, they should lower our water bills and fix our streets. The streets down there are a mess. We don't want the pier. We don't want the people. We don't want the drugs that are going on down there. Does anybody know about that? Hello? They're dealing drugs down there. We've got a problem down there. We do not want the pier. They should refurbish the pier that they got down there and take the trucks off our streets and ferry them back and forth. That's it.
The first two weeks in June, the date hasn't been determined yet, the MWRA will have the community meetings for residents to meet. And just to clear up one other thing, it's the state mandated the fishing game due to the, the solid license. That doesn't mean it has to be the MWRA.
The L.A. Pier.
It's not the MWRA that's paying for its fishing game.
But the L.A. Pier, the L.A. Pier.
I'm not questioning that. I'm just saying, we will have a state, the first two weeks in June, there will be in the local paper and on the website, there will be a meeting for MWRA.
Mr. Town Council President, if I may. Chief Landigan, I'm wondering, um, will that be before or after construction begins on that parking lot and pier?
Uh, that will be before. That will be before. And we even spoke offline with one of the councilors, uh, to try to come up with a different type of, uh, paving or lack of paving or a reduction in the number of spots as well. So it's still a work in progress, but I don't think the MWRA is going to go forward. Uh, there's a meeting tomorrow where I think they're going to introduce a new proposal, which will be brought to the residents. But again, it's not a MWRA project. It's a state project on the city of Boston. But they will be bringing out a new proposal.
I attended several of the so-called, when they started, the community meetings. You have to understand, and I'm not blaming or holding anybody responsible, but our town government has rolled over and played dead to the airport, to the, uh, MWRA. It seems like every single organization around us or any single group, the tunnel, East Boston, whatever it may be, Winthrop has to roll over and play dead. And then they're thrown a few gold pieces. Go back home, you've got a few more dollars. When they proposed the pier, we, at that time, were at the meeting and we said, "No. Please don't consider it." They immediately swung that whole concept over to repairing Charleston because at that same meeting, they discussed bringing in all those trucks of their, um, uh, I forgot what they, food waste. The food waste, thank you. Okay? So they shifted gears immediately, right there in the meeting that we all attended. All right? We went out of that meeting with a lot of confidence, figuring they're going to address the need to repair their, and, and be able to boat in, which will alleviate a lot of the heavy burden of traffic and trucking that goes on daily down there. Now all of a sudden, the state's involved, the pier's going to go in, they haven't talked about town security, so they haven't talked about the impact of the town. What do we do? Roll over and play dead again?
We're going to go into regular business, Al. You'll have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to continue with public comments. Uh, there's no correspondence committee reports, finance, council material.
Finance committee met this evening. Prior to the meeting, there were two items, two agenda items. The first was a transfer of ten thousand dollars from the Town Council Reserve to a new special article, uh, for installa- for installation of a beacon light on the water tower to bring it into compliance with FAA requirements. Uh, we had held that over from the last meeting so we could get more information and to see if Masport would be willing to, um, to pay for that. Uh, and tonight we found out that we believe Masport is willing to pay for that, and they have purchased the equipment needed to do that. We have kept it in committee right now, just in case something changes, but as of now, we feel that, uh, Masport will handle that situation. The other item on the agenda was transfer a hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred from capital stabilization to fund a new special article in the general fund for the purpose of funding twenty-five percent design engineering for the Revere Street project to secure tips, funding, or take any other action there, too. This also was on the agenda item at the previous meeting. We held it over to get more information. President at the meeting, Councilor Christopher, was delayed with a ac- not personal accident, but, uh, an accident in transit, so, um, there was myself and Councilor, uh, LaCanti from Precinct Three. We still had, also member at the, also president at the meeting was Council President Vecchia, Councilor Calla, uh, Town Manager McDellanti. So we had more discussion on it. There were still some questions which some of the committee members had, so we did not want to hold it in committee anymore. We wanted to bring it forward to the council, uh, but we did not bring it forward with any recommendation at all, but we did bring it forward. We will be bringing it forward to the council and over business. And that is it.
While I have you, Millerfield Committee?
Millerfield Committee hasn't met since early March. Everything is, is fine at Millerfield. There's some upcoming, uh, track work that will be done after school is out at the, uh, third week in June, I believe, where they will repaint, uh, surface the track, uh, because we all remember to open it on time and with the weather constraints, we didn't want to put the red coating that was going to be on the track. So that will be put down in about the third week of June. It's about a two-week process and they will restripe the track lines after that. Uh, there is another meeting later this month, and that is all we have to report from now.
Thank you. Council LaCanti, Precinct Three Community Meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Town Council President. Um, it was a very well-attended meeting. Um, I brought a sign-in sheet for fifty people, filled that up in no time, and I think there's probably twenty more on top of that. Um, I'm sort of sorry to report back that there's a bit of a skepticism about town government from a lot of people that were in the room, that they're providing the needs for the people down on Precinct Three. Um, some of the issues that kind of continuously came up were some concern about Ural Beach, about some of the storms that have hit very, very hard down there. Glad to see the DPW start to do some work down there, but I think there's a lot more to be done, both short-term and long-term. Um, there was a lot of questions about when the town council will be sort of providing some leadership on what we're doing on the ferry. Um, and I got a lot of questions about the parking lot that sort of has come up a bit tonight, um, and the pier that's proposed to be put down on Deer Island. A lot of people that didn't know about it and were very concerned when they heard about the potential for more congestion in our neighborhood, more traffic, and the potential for more crime without the MWRA really offering any resources in, in exchange for mitigation on streets or safety or anything like that. Um, but it was a really great meeting and I think we're going to be having them regularly in the future.
In further record, you did invite me, but I had a school committee meeting.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying.
That's why I wasn't there. Uh, Councilor Boncorrie, Rules and Ordinances?
The Rules and Ordinance Committee had a joint meeting with the Appointments, Commissions and Committees Committee on March twenty-seventh at six P.M. in the Town Council chambers. Present were myself and, uh, members of both committees. Uh, there were two issues, uh, on our agenda. The first issue was to establish a Winthrop Shoreline Resiliency Committee. Uh, we had a discussion about that and we decided to hold off bringing a motion on it because the resiliency workshop was going to be that Friday. But in the meantime, Councilor Engman agreed to post and prepare a, an article seeking members to that committee, asking for certain expertise. Do you want us to talk about that?
Sure. The discussion was to, uh, as Councilor Boncorrie said, create a coastal resiliency committee comprised of around seven members, um, who have training, education, or experience in one of the, one or more of the following areas: shoreline protection, climate change, civil engineering, coastal engineering, grant writing, water flood management, and/or emergency preparedness. Uh, so the hope is to get, uh, we have a lot of talented people in Winthrop and the thought was to get some folks in Winthrop who are already working in this areas at the table to provide some, um, advice to the council going forward.
And hopefully that advertisement will go seeking those people, and if we get some applications, then we will, you know, probably form that committee. The second agenda item was an item to adopt a new council rule which deals with finances. Uh, we voted to approve that and under new business, I will be making a motion to add a new section to the council rules, which will be Section twelve D. And the meeting adjourned, uh, I think it was at seven-ten.
Thank you, Councilor Boncorrie, Councilor Christopher.
So the, uh, the Town Council Economic Development Subcommittee gathered on the twenty-seventh of March. Uh, we had a group of stakeholders, uh, representing the business community down the center, who was also, um, present, as well as, um, representatives from Town Hall. And, um, we identified at our first meeting, uh, since we, since the council, this council had gathered, uh, parking as, uh, something that we wanted to work on down the center. Um, so at the meeting, we drafted a survey that was to be, uh, sent out to members of the, uh, business community in the center. Um, so we drafted up a survey and we have distributed it. I want to thank, um, Ashlyn Howard and Jimmy Murray, who, um, helped distribute that, uh, over the, um, course of the past week or so. We have a, um, deadline date of, uh, to bring the surveys back of Friday. Um, I guess that's kind of a soft deadline. If you give one afterwards, I, I'm sure we'll still accept it. Um, but we're going to go over those results that, uh, at our next meeting on Tuesday, um, the next, uh, so a week from today. And hopefully, uh, we'll be able to identify some issues that people have and, uh, start working on those over the, uh, coming, uh, weeks. We're also going to be talking to residents in the area to identify what are some, uh, points of contention that they have, where cars that, uh, may be using the businesses' parking in, on the neighborhoods, and identifying some solutions to that as well. Um, so in, throughout this entire process, I want to make it clear that, um, I'm always available to talk to anybody who has any issues with the, uh, or, um, comments about how they might be able to, uh, better parking down the center. Um, we're also going to have, I don't know if I want to call it a forum, but I want to say that we'll have at least a, an opportunity for business owners and residents to sit down with us, um, you know, in some type of an open forum, uh, way to, uh, get this plan moving. Uh, so that was our meeting and we adjourned in about, uh, very quick, about forty-five minutes.
Thank you, Councilor Christopher. Uh, Councilor McDuffie, from the DPW, uh, committee?
DPW. Yes, we had a meeting, uh, at the DPW that was heavily attended by the Dog Park proponents. I met with them for the first time, uh, got a little bit of background information on what had been, uh, discussed and planned and debated in past meetings. We talked about the, what they determined to be the best three locations for their choice of the Dog Park, Hannaford Park up at the Highlands, uh, the Wheelock Street location, the Veterans Road location, and, uh, the pros and cons of that as well. There was another option, which is close to the DPW facility, uh, on, uh, I guess it's Kennedy Drive that runs down by the school. Uh, it was attended by, uh, Steve Calla, Director of DPW, who was very informative on, uh, the pros and cons of various locations concerning permitting, uh, and other impacts to the environment of those options. Uh, so the first meeting was really, uh, an eye-opening, uh, experience for me. Uh, and I'm, uh, very glad to see a citizens group like this, uh, who already raised a lot of money and have some great ideas. So we, uh, rescheduled to April eleventh. Unfortunately, we had to reschedule the following day, April twelfth. This time, we held it, uh, at the Harvey Room. And, uh, similar things came up, but we, they decided to, uh, to kind of form a little bit more of a structure to their committee, to, uh, assign, uh, specific roles and functions. And, uh, the website is the primary, uh, method of informing the public and the members. Wendy Corcom is running that and she's in touch with quite a few members. So, uh, we're kind of rejuvenating this idea. I'd like to be the liaison person between the, uh, Citizens Committee and the Town Council. Uh, and so we'll, uh, proceed with that and I'll try to keep, uh, everybody updated on how we proceed with that.
So there'll be no, uh, recommendation for a location tonight?
There is not. Uh, after the Dog Park, uh, discussions concluded, uh, I met with Steve Calla, Director of DPW, and, uh, we went over some of the issues that are confronting him, some of the problems and, uh, expect- expected problems as he goes forward, things that he needs for equipment, best way to manage his people, and, uh, it was very informative. Unfortunately, we didn't have a lot of time left after the Dog Park discussions, but, uh, we have not scheduled a new meeting at this time.
Thank you, Council. Uh, Councilor Calla and LaCanti regarding the Precinct Three and Precinct Six Community Meeting?
Councilor Calla, want to start? Councilor Galla, would you start?
We had a very good showing, I thought, of residents from Precinct Three and Six, and Deputy Chief John Goodwin brought some information, that he put together a slideshow showing the statistics on crimes between Precinct Three and Precinct Six. We, you know, he gave us information on a various amount of things. He covered a lot of material, and I believe it will be on the website, if anybody's interested in seeing that. Council President was there, Town Manager and our Chief was there, but he also introduced at least about, at least 10 different offices that we interact with in other communities as well, to show us how they, they work, and they investigate, and they try to figure, you know, like, there are people that are creating crimes here in Winthrop that are also doing the same thing in right there. And so, you know, they gather information, and they share it with each other, and that's how, you know, they work, to try to take these people off the streets. So I thought it was really very informative, it was very interesting. There was a question-and answering segment at the end, where anyone that had some questions or concerns could speak to the police personally, which was, I thought was great. And I left my list of names of all the officers that did show up at this precinct meeting. Perhaps Chief Delahanty can give them a little bit of credit for being there, and we have a great, we have a police officer that deals with drugs specifically, he was there. You know, all the things that we're concerned about as residents was, you know, hashed out and talked about, and I think we'll have some more of those in other precincts as well, in the future, just so people can speak and ask questions and see how this all comes about.
Thank you. Councilor LaCanti?
Yes, if I could just add, I was really impressed by the job that the Police Department did in their presentation to us. I'm a scientist in my day job, and getting to see graphs and information presented sort of so orderly was really great to see. They did a very impressive job, it was very informative, and it's heartening to know that we've got such a great department behind them.
Thank you. Appointments, Commissions and Committees, Councilor Lucero?
Sure, we were hoping to meet earlier this week, or actually last Friday. Unfortunately, we couldn't come together as a group of scheduled conflicts, but what Appointments, Commissions and Committees is taking on is establishing the mission statement for the Diversity, Inclusion, Accessibility Committee, as well as looking at the various different review processes that we have for town staff that report directly to the council. So while we had to cancel that meeting last week, that should be coming up again when our schedules permit next week.
Thank you, Councilor Lucero. I want to take a motion to suspend the loans.
Council President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the current council meeting right now, so we could pick up and do the financial forum for the spring forum, and then come back after the spring forum and continue our meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Nice, have it.
You want to take a brief recess?
Take a five-minute recess? Please silence your phones. We had phones going off in the first portion of the meeting, I appreciate it, please silence your phones. Thank you. Yes. Terry Delahanty, our Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks for allowing us this opportunity to go over the financial interest of the town from 2019, and then we have a three-to-five-year outlook on our financial situation over the next three to five years. Before I turn it over to the CFO, Mike Perez, I just want to, you know, remind ourselves that we need to be conservative in our revenue figures, we need to have enough room for error. These are assumptions that we have to make based on prior years, and moving forward, we should be much more conservative, I think, than we were last year on the projected revenues. So thank you for keeping that in mind as we move forward. This department is here, if anyone at the end has questions for the department head, they'll be more than willing to take that question off of the CFO. Thank you. Thank you.
So what we're going over today is mostly the financial outlook of the town, as well as the preliminary estimates on the FY19 budget. The budget has not been finalized, it has not been submitted to council yet, so we're still working on finishing it up, and it is subject to change. The first thing is the overall economic context that Winthrop is in, and right now, the state economy is doing really well. On the left, there's the percent change in real gross domestic product for Massachusetts, as well as the nation as a whole, and there has been growth in both of those. And then on the right, the total employment in both Massachusetts, as well as the Boston metropolitan area. The dashed lines across both graphs horizontal on the employment represent the 2001 peaks. So as you can see, we are over peak employment as reached in 2001, so right now, there's more people working, the gross domestic product is increasing. We also have continued growth in the real median income in the state, and as of this data, which is through calendar year 2016, the per capita real gross domestic product in Massachusetts is second in the nation, second only to the District of Columbia, and it is 129% the nationwide figure. On the right side, we have the unemployment rate of Massachusetts, the United States, and Winthrop. The Winthrop data isn't seasonally adjusted, so that's why that line moves more than the other two lines, and generally, Winthrop has been tracking lower than the state as a whole, and both the state and Winthrop have been tracking lower than the nation as a whole. So overall, good picture with respect to the employment in the area. And then with respect to real estate, we have continued growth in the real estate market. Median home prices are over the 2007 peak, the average days on market until sale is down to about 30, and the, again, the average single home values took a significant drop after the 2007 recession, but we have now made back all of that ground and gone up from there. So that's the overall economic picture that we're operating in, and here's how it translates to the town of Winthrop. We're looking at an overall budget of about $62 million, and that's primarily made up of the general fund, as well as the exempt debt, which is part of the general fund, but because of how some of that changes over time, I've called it out separately. We also have almost $11 million in enterprise funds, and about $200,000 in revolving funds. We'll get into more detail about each of those later, but first, going over the revenue. Now, revenue, we're severely limited in Massachusetts, what we as a municipality are able to collect, and the primary revenue source for us is property taxes. And that amount includes the debt exclusions, which is why the share of property taxes is jumping from 63% to 65%, from the FY17 actual to the FY19 recommended, and that's because of the addition of the New Meadow High School and Millerfield Debt Service. In terms of our revenue, 88% comes from property taxes and state aid, we do not control those items. Those are, property tax grows at 2.5%, and state aid depends on the state budget process. So the remaining 12% is the local receipts, and those are the items that we have more control over. Now, on those, the local receipts is, it's an extremely broad category, there's a lot of individual revenue accounts that make these up. We've grouped them and categorized them so that they're easier to understand and to evaluate, but many of these are extremely volatile, and the graph on the bottom is showing the percent change in four of the largest individual accounts within local receipts, and as you can see, those are moving from positive to negative in different times over different periods, so we have to project some of these revenues conservatively, because when they turn, they turn quickly, and particularly with something like building permits, we need to be projecting that out into the future, and we don't know what construction activity is going to be like, it depends on the total value of the project, it depends on the number of different projects going on at the same time. So that revenue is something that has been coming in significantly over budget, but that's partly by design, because we don't want to have a deficit on that. So going into a little bit more detail of what these local receipts are, the excise taxes are the largest single source within the local receipts. There are four of them, but the boat excise just goes to the Waterways Fund. The meals and rooms are local option taxes, we do not collect those directly, the state collects them and disperses them to us. The meals excise was added in 2009, so the first full fiscal year of it was 2010, and that's three-quarters, three-quarters of 1% on meals sold. There is a new local option tax for marijuana sales, but that is a rate up to 2% of the sale, and there, if, if we were to get $30,000 in revenue from that tax, that would mean there would need to be $1.5 million in sales of marijuana in Winthrop. And just as a point of reference, the total hotel room sales in Winthrop was about $1.8 million, and total meal sales about $24 million. So we would need to have a significant market in order for that to be a major revenue source. The motor vehicle and boat excise are both set at rates by the state, depending on the value of the boat or motor vehicle, so we don't have a lot of control over those either. In terms of the investment income, this is one that we can directly control, but it, we are limited by Mass General law on what we're allowed to invest in, and over the past several years, we have had significant gains in our increase in, in our investment income despite low interest rates, and that's primarily due to monies that we had from the school building, as well as Millerfield, so these numbers are not going to continue at the high rates that we have. We had almost $200,000 in FY15, that's not likely to happen again. Pilots, which is payments in lieu of tax, that's money that is per agreement with the MWRA for providing services to them on Deer Island in terms of police and fire, as well as, well, an agreement that we have with Massport, which was a 20-year term, signed back in 2004. So we don't, we're still within the terms of these agreements. The MWRA agreement has an inflation clause, so it is increasing over time, but it's a small increase. The Massport amount is a fixed $900,000 a year, so without renegotiating that, we have no, and they're within a fixed contract, so they could renegotiate with us if they wanted to, but it's, it's something that we're looking into doing. Departmental revenue is the next largest, and this is an extremely volatile account because of the number of different things in it, as well as there are a few miscellaneous one-time credits that, that we get for various things. We had a payment in fiscal year 17 of a refund for utility rebates for switching the streetlights so that they were more efficient, and then in FY16, there was a refund from a prior year, so that's why both of those are skewed. Departmental revenue is one of the ones that we have more control over, some of these are things that we can set the rates for, but they still make up a small fraction of our overall revenue. Fees and fines, again, are a small percentage of the overall revenue, but we do have more ability to directly impact these. This is where the parking ticket revenue comes in, and as you can see, from fiscal year 15 on, we've had a large increase in the revenue from non-criminal citations, as well as 4U, and that's been a direct result of the Inspection Services Division at really going out and forcing the ordinances and making sure that things are kept up to code. Licenses of permits is primarily building permits, and this is a revenue source that moves around a lot. So it's something that we have to budget conservatively, because as you can see, from FY14, we received almost $500,000, but the next year, it fell by almost a third, so it's something that you don't want to consistently estimate at the high mark, because then you could have a $150,000 deficit. And again, with penalties and interest, these are another thing that, that is volatile, and it's the penalties that people pay for being late on the various taxes, it's not something that you want to budget aggressively, because you have no control over this, you don't, you don't particularly want to be assuming that people will be paying their bills late, but you do get revenue from it. So that's the general revenue picture. In terms of the FY19 budget, right now, what we're looking at, about $50.7 million on the general fund, that $26,000 in non-recurring available funds, that's money from the Cemetery Special Care Trust in order to maintain the cemeteries, which is something that we normally budget for, it just hasn't been, we haven't needed to take the money out of the trust in past years, but we may in FY19. Overall, the revenue picture is, is good as far as where we're at right now. State aid, the 5% increase there is, as of the Governor's Budget, the House Ways and Means Budget was released last week, it actually showed a slight increase over the Governor's Budget, but that's just the House Ways and Means Budget, it has to go through the House Final, Senate Ways and Means, Senate Final, Conference Committee, and then it's signed in. Unfortunately, the state typically finishes their budget process after the close of the fiscal year, just because of the nature of their process, so we have to, we have to have a number much earlier than that, so we typically use the Governor's Budget, and then, depending on how far along in the process they are, we can take a look at, you know, if the Governor's Budget is significantly lower than what the House or Senate come out with, then maybe we'll take a midpoint of those, but because of movement in these, it's not something that, just because the House has an increase, we, we budget to that line. Also on here are the Enterprise Fund indirect costs, which is just billing the enterprise funds for the portion of shared services that they use, the general funded departments, like the Town Manager's Office, Human Resources, Finance, Treasurer Collector, all of these support the enterprise funds as well. The Treasurer Collector processes the bills for water, but the water enterprise doesn't directly pay for that, because it's a different fund source, so these indirect costs are a way of capturing that charge, and making sure that the enterprise funds function more as a standalone entity whilst benefiting from the economies of scale being part of the town. In terms of our expenditures, this is directly what, what we do on a day-to-day basis, so expenditures have been increasing. In terms of the share of, of general fund expenditures, it's been fairly consistent. Education is by far the largest category, with shared expenses coming in next, which contains employee benefits, debt service, the curbside trash contract, and a number of other items. Then in terms of the enterprise funds, the vast majority is the water and sewer enterprise, all the other enterprise funds are of a fairly similar size, but 86% of our enterprise fund is the water and sewer. fund is the water and sewer. The different types of expenditures we have, we are primarily personnel. We have a lot of non-personnel costs in terms of fringe benefits and debt service, but aside from that, it's generally personnel. We've been seeing a significant increase in our fixed costs, those things that we don't have direct control over. Our insurance premiums have been increasing significantly, and that's mostly due to the addition of the new middle high school, which the value of that building is greater than the value of all other town-owned buildings combined. So, that clearly led to a significant increase in our property insurance. We had been seeing some significant increases in energy costs, but over the past couple of years, those have flattened, and that's partly due to low rates in energy, but also due to an increase in the number of energy efficiency projects that we've pursued as a town. And this is showing that the work that our energy manager is doing is working. We're seeing benefits from that. The other largest fixed cost is the state assessments, which are growing at a significant rate. In terms of the general fund expenditures, this is a rough picture of where we are on the FY19 budget. Again, this is a preliminary, and all of these things are subject to change, but those are the approximate values. We do still have a deficit that needs to be closed prior to submitting this to the town council, so there will be movement in these. Then in terms of what the outlook is for the next five years, we had a surplus on the actual results, FY16 and FY17. That end-of-year surplus is the basis, the starting point for free cash. So, unless there is a surplus at the end of the year, there will not be free cash. And the larger that surplus is, the larger the starting point of free cash. The FY18 budget is required to be balanced. All budgets are required to be balanced when we submit them. The FY19 budget will, but is not currently. Our revenue growth is fairly flat. It's about two percent. There are some variations in that, but that's mostly because of the debt service for the exempt debt, and 65% comes from the property tax levy. That grows at two and a half percent generally, so that is the bulk of our revenue growth. Our expenditure growth is about 4.1%, so what we have is a structural deficit. The projected growth in our expenditures exceeds the growth in our revenues. This is an issue that will keep coming up every year. It is not unique to Winthrop. It's an issue that most local governments, particularly in Massachusetts, face, where we have a year-on-year deficit that we need to find ways of closing. The expenditure growth is a conservative figure. It's a realistic figure, but it does not include any new projects or addressing our capital needs, which we know are significant. It also does not contain any explicit impact from union contracts, and as wage growth increases in the broader labor market, that puts additional pressure on the town because our revenue grows at two and a half percent. So, if wages overall are growing at a rate higher than that, that means we have to cut somewhere in order to make that fit. So, unfortunately, that's not a terribly fun outlook, but it's realistic. Now, in terms of free cash, this is, on the right, it's a little small there, but it's a shot of the actual form from the Department of Revenue at the state where they actually do the free cash calculation. The starting place is the unreserved, undesignated fund balance in the general fund, which is not exactly the same as the end-of-year surplus because the end-of-year surplus is on a budgetary basis versus a generally accepting accounting principles or GAAP basis. So, there are some slight differences in that, which is why these numbers may not exactly line up with expectations. And then from that, undesignated fund balance, they reduce it by outstanding receivables on the tax levy, and then any other deficits in any funds on a GAAP basis. So, these may not be deficits that we see on a budgetary basis, but based on accounting rules, they show up as deficits. So, that reduces our free cash, and then they add in some deferred revenue, and that's where the free cash calculation actually comes from. It's a fairly simple thing, but ends up being extremely complicated and is very difficult to project forward. But because of our stabilization fund policy, portions of this free cash get moved into the various stabilization funds, and the town has historically used remaining free cash as the way of funding capital needs. And as our budgets get tighter and tighter, that means less and less free cash. And with revenue projections, we have to err on the conservative side because we don't want to run an operating deficit at year-end, as well as we have the additional burden of trying to produce a surplus at year-end so that we are able to generate some free cash to fund our capital needs. So, that's the general outlook, and I think we can go to questions from the council? So, they, you guys, all right, then we can open up to the public?
Good evening, Mark Ogishon, precinct one. Eighty-eight percent of general fund revenue comes from property taxes and state aid. What's the breakdown between the two?
The vast majority is property tax. State aid accounts for about 23% of our total revenue, so about a third of that 88%.
Okay.
Do we have a separate capital improvement program? You mentioned that it does not account for capital projects. The question is, do we have a formal listing of the next five to 10 years of all the capital needs? We've heard discussion around a number of things, certainly the center development project, the police and fire station replacement over time. I'm sure there are other things, roads, et cetera. Do we have a document that says to us how much we should be investing in capital over the next 10 years?
As part of the budget, we do submit a capital plan. We're working on improving the capital plan, but the capital plan would not necessarily include large projects like the center project or a new public safety building because that's something that's going to need to be taken outside of the capital plan. The capital plan is more for maintaining the operating infrastructure, larger things like that, roadway improvements, the consistent improvement that we need to make to our water and sewer infrastructure would be separate. We're working on an improvement to our capital plan.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful for long-term planning and for helping the citizens work with the council and the staff to think about prioritization. If we could have a formal list of all those things that are being contemplated and have a forecast dollar level next to them, so we could see that and make some long-term capital planning strategy decisions, that would be helpful, I think, in most municipalities. We see that kind of document exist. It would be good to have one here. Second, and separate, is, and perhaps you're getting at this in your capital improvement plan that you're talking about, is there an asset management plan? One of the things that I find disturbing is, by example, none of the snow equipment, removal equipment was available at the first snowstorm, right? That tells me we haven't been investing in the upkeep of existing fleet, buildings, roadways, other equipment, et cetera. And we need to make sure that we see those as financial obligations that need to be attended to. It's my understanding, when the pipes froze in the relatively new building that we built, one of the elementary schools, that was a result of a boiler malfunction. That tells me that something is wrong with the asset management reinvestment and some of the technical elements of buildings like that. There's also roof replacement schedules, et cetera. It would be good to have sort of a state-of-good repair asset management document and plan, so again, we can see what the exposure of the taxpayers is over time. Because not having that means that we're always dealing with emergencies and not maintaining something. If you look at a typical building, a well-maintained building over a 30-year period will cost you 50% less than a building where you don't have an active preventive maintenance plan and you're responding to emergencies. That premium comes out of the taxpayer pocket. So, we do really need to have an asset management plan that looks at best practices with respect to predictive maintenance and preventative maintenance. Thank you.
So, two parts to that. The actual maintenance is being done through our public works department, and I'll defer on that to the DPW director. In terms of the financial aspect of it, this is something that would be fantastic to have. Unfortunately, it comes at a very significant cost, both in terms of staff time to develop the infrastructure and the reporting, as well as the cost of, honestly, a software package in order to maintain the inventory, to process work orders every time a repair is done to a vehicle, to be able to update its record in there. And unfortunately, improvements to our software infrastructure is something that is on the list of capital items that need to be addressed. It was something that was proposed last year or the year before. There was a significant software project that was proposed, but funding wasn't available for that, and it has been deferred.
Yeah, I, listen, I've got great sympathy for this. This is the business that I'm in, and I realize you do need a software package and you do need to devote staff time to it. I think it would be important to keep that information in front of a council. A lot of these councils are new, and we may not be able to get at it this year, but perhaps there is a four-year plan to get to the point where we need to be in this town, and we can find the resources and support by making some difficult decisions about some other things. Again, to the extent that we don't deal with this, the poor DPW is running in a cycle of up and downs, up and downs, and unpredictability. I think it would be fair to the workers in this town to have a reasonably set of decent equipment always available to them, and it does cost the taxpayers less money to do that over the long run. So, I would encourage you to sort of bring those issues back up, given that you've got a largely new council in front of you, and also with the commitment to greater transparency, to allow citizens to understand that there are trade-offs to get us to a better place of managing the assets that our taxpayer dollars have used to invest in. Thank you.
Lisa Albergini, precinct six. Just one really quick follow-up question. First, I echo everything that was said by Mr. Iello about the need for an asset management plan and investing in that software system so that we can use it and have it be functional. Relative to the capital plan, I wonder if you could just tell us, rough orders of magnitude, the amount of the capital plan, number one. And I assume it includes like a list of all the streets and sidewalks in the town with some priority assigned to them in terms of, you know, when and the order in which they would need to be replaced. So, I'm just wondering if you can give us an order of magnitude of the amount of the capital plan, so we have that in mind.
Unfortunately, without an effective asset management solution, no, I can't, because I can't tell you on a per-item basis exactly what we have and what we need in order. So, for example, the DPW trucks, I don't have the exact condition of those, the replacement cost, in order to get at a total of what it would cost to replace that fleet. And that extends further into the street and sidewalk. We are working on doing a pavement condition index, and that's something that we'll be starting on shortly in order to get the current condition of the roads, so we'll be able to do that, at least for the roads. The problem with roads, and which leads into the water and sewer, is getting a cost estimate on those is extremely challenging because once you actually get to the main, it could be significantly worse than what you originally projected. So, the number that we'd be able to get to would really only be a lower-bound number, and it would be likely to be significantly higher from that.
So, on the capital improvement plan or the capital plan, when do you, I understand you're now inventorying like the streets and sidewalks, so we can at least print an initial number, attach those, understanding that by the time you get to some of those, conditions have worsened or you have to undo drainage, when are you projecting having that first draft of the capital plan in place, and will we be able to get that?
Well, history. My capital improvement plan existed over a spreadsheet that, over the last couple of months, we've been working to put in a booklet, with pitches of the actual condition, current conditions of what the department heads are requesting for repair or upgrade or replacement. So, I have my intern working on that as we speak. Department heads have been asked to either take whatever they don't need off the list and add new stuff as that process goes, and what the cost is, the justification for that cost, and everything else into a booklet. So, we'll have a capital plan improvement booklet. Then we will prioritize with the council and town manager's office and the department head on what priority level that should go. You know, obviously, life and safety is first, which includes a dangerous playground. And when I say life and safety, it doesn't just mean police and fire get what they need. It means if we have a dangerous playground, that holds a priority. Last we looked, this list was in the millions, certainly, and we probably don't have everything the department heads actually need to have replaced on that list. We have worked with Meyer over a recent short-term period to have, make sure that the checklist to be done in every building by the custodians and schools, so we don't have the issue that we had down Fort Benning, that a hatch was left open and a pipe froze up. So, we have the building maintenance manager working with those custodians to make sure that they're checking things on a daily basis. In the high school, the school department hired their own maintenance director for the high school that deals with the middle school and high school issues. And people must have heard, you know, over the last winter, we had an issue in the front part of that building, which was repaired by under warranty and by the builders. So, we're trying to fix that. So, that's a long answer to your question, but I also wanted to let you know the history, where we are today, and when can you expect that. I hope to have that by the end of June. Councilor England has requested that some time ago, so we are working on it. Anyone else have questions? So, you know, for the questions, Mr. President, I'll turn the mic back over to you.
Next item on the agenda is the town manager's report.
Mr. President, thank you. The MVP funding has notified us of additional funding sources for those who have actually completed the MVP initial process, which includes holding a public forum for the citizens. I'm happy to say, through Joe's efforts, we have accomplished that, and it will be available for funding now for certain projects to help with the coastal flooding in certain areas of town. So, that was a very positive thing for us to hear today. Archive Social, we have contracted with Archive Social. This is a social media archiving firm that will take all our social media pages and archive whatever's put up there for a period of time so we can be in compliance with the public records law. It'll help distribute those records quicker and more efficiently and save on staff time to dig through all the social media sites, so Facebook and Twitter that the town owns is considered public record, and we have to maintain those records in an orderly fashion. So, I'm happy that we have them now on board to make us more compliant with the public records law. The Boston Blades have notified us that they will not be returning next year to use last in the rink. That was a revenue source of about $30,000 for the rink. So, and the reason that they have cited is not enough locker room space or shower facility in the rink. So, we have lost the Boston Blades, unfortunately. I've enjoyed going to some of the games with my daughters, and certainly, it's certainly going to affect the revenue for the rink next year. So, I would urge, as we move forward, that we look at all these issues that are coming up and take the appropriate actions on that site, as well as the middle school site. Contract Five, work is continuing and exp- Contract five work is continuing and expects to be done in July. Senate Business District is, we seem to find ourselves in this quagmire that there was council authorization to borrow. Borrowing did happen with the MWRA dispersments have been actually granted to the town, which we have to start paying for. So if we're not going to do this project, I'd like authorization for the council to reengage MWRA, to see if they will take those dispersments back and redistribute them to another community that might be in need in order to save us the interest in principal payment on this. This is six, seven, eight, nine months out. I don't want to raise the water and sewer rates on people unnecessarily to actually pay for loan money that we have that we're not going to use. So I would seriously recommend that the council take this up in new business, give us some direction in which way the council wants to go at this point, and let us at least put off those payments as best as we can. There's three motions that were submitted late, I apologize for that. They were submitted late this afternoon, that we'd also have to go to Finance Committee and also have public notice, and those are wage increases for fire and DPW workers. The clerk, we submitted them through the clerk, and if you don't have them, then we'll have to wait the next meeting. The ferry, we've heard a lot about the ferry tonight. I am also pleased to announce tonight that DEP has authorized a $150,000 dispersment to the town in Winterford Ferry. Also Mast Dot has sent a commitment that they will give us $161,000 for the ferry service. That leaves us a gap of about $100,000 in ticket seals. Last year came in around $68,000, we think. We could actually make up the whole $100,000 in ticket seals this year. Tangi Safunis, who is here tonight, informed me today that the Quincy Chamber of Commerce has rented out the vessel between noon and three every Thursday in June and July and August. So that was a revenue source that we didn't expect. So we are out there, Mast Dot has made up signs that they will put on the red line because this mitigation money is mitigation for the red line disruption and service for the Quincy people, so the signs for the Winter Ferry will go on the red line to say, take the ferry, save time. So hopefully, we'll get the ticket seals increased as well. Again, we're looking at a formula of doing nighttime cruises in Winter and Quincy, as well as the Seaport District, and advertisement will be given out by the Seaport District, by the Chamber in Quincy, and by the mayor's office in Quincy for those nighttime cruises. So we've added quite a lot of services and revenue opportunity for this ferry. I think we can balance it this year with all our efforts and everyone rowing in the same direction. You know, we did, it's an incredible increase for Mast Dot, from $75,000 last year to $161 this year. We had to prove out what our cost points were, and we did that. So they've authorized that $161. We did commit some money to marketing, not to exceed $10,000 in marketing money at their request. I think it was a reasonable request that they want to see us successful, but they'll give us the increase with the guarantee commitment from the town of $10,000 in marketing money. We're in talks with the mayor in Revere and getting in some advertisement in Revere hotels as well. So I think we've done our due diligence and tried to get as much funding for this vessel and this program as possible, and I think we're very close to breaking even on that. High school tennis courts, it's that time of year. That's a subject no one really wants to talk about, but I think we need to address this. And if it's going to stay a tennis court, we need to know that. And I would ask if it's going to stay a tennis court, that the council vote to put this under the jurisdiction of the Miller Field Committee, and have the repairs done that is necessary through the Miller Field Committee as part of the vote for the tennis courts, the recreational facilities that are included in that area. I think, you know, once we know that the direction of the council is going to go in, and we're going to keep the courts, then we can address the safety issues around those courts. But first, we need to know what's the desire of the council.
Okay, we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Town manager's report, the school department's report, I'll give you a brief update. The last meeting was held on April 9th. Two major things to report out. The transportation, the bus transportation has, they took a vote to outsource it, and I guess it's more cost-effective to outsource it. We've had some problems over the years trying to man the buses, the schedule and so forth. And one of the other interesting things that turns out that the school department is to offer more transportation services free of charge to a lot of the students in Winter that we're actually paying for, so be actually transporting them free. Transportation, and the other major thing, the Miller Field manual and fee schedule was approved by the school committee. So there is a manual that's very similar to the manual that we published when we opened up the Neil Shapiro Auditorium to make sure that we protected our investment there and made sure that proper staffing is on when people rent out that facility. And basically, the same thing is going to happen at Miller Field. That was basically the school report. Under old business, town council appropriate $4,931,500 for the purpose of financing the construction of the town center. This thing has been kicked down the road. What's the council's pleasure?
Would you request that continued this further?
You want to leave it? Any discussion?
Well, I think it's something that we're going to have to discuss as the town manager asked us. We're going to have to come to some sort of situation. We can keep kicking it down the road, but, you know, I think we need to discuss this. If we're not prepared to do it right now, I think it should be on the agenda for the next meeting, and we need to come to some sort of decision.
Table at the next meeting? Okay. Town council fund $142,100 for 25% design engineering for the town of Winter, Revere Street TIP project. That came out of committee with no recommendation. What's the pleasure of the council?
To make a motion that we approve the $142,100 for the Winter Revere Street TIP project.
Motion has been made.
Second.
We have a second. It's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Councilor Lutteiri.
As Mr. Aiello stated, and a couple other people, Ms. Wallace, I think, I don't know if she's here anymore, has stated, it's incredible to be able to do a project, a three-plus-million-dollar project, for relatively short money. My concern with this is, this is a streetscape project, basically. This is giving new streets, new sidewalks, and my understanding is, it doesn't affect the infrastructure underneath there. So if we do open up, or if we do this, even though it's a great deal, but if we do it, and then a year down the road, we have a water main break, or we have to change the water or the sewer, ideally, it would be an unbelievable opportunity for us to open up the street, do the infrastructure needed, and take advantage of this project. I don't feel comfortable yet that we're in position to do that. I understand what a fantastic deal it is and to be involved in the TIP program, and you don't want to give back something that they're giving to you, but I just have reservations. I would like to ask the DPW director if he could just tell us the condition of the infrastructure underneath the streets that are being looked at here.
We have four water mains in that roadway. Two of them are fairly new, two of them are in need of work, whether it's a lining or a full replacement. Sewer and drainage are all original, upwards of 100 years old. National Grid also has old main in there, so we would have to coordinate with them to get the gas work done in that section. There's a lot of utilities in that roadway, so it's certainly something that would need to be coordinated, and certainly, in my opinion, be something we'd want to address before resurfacing.
Anybody else wish to be heard in the council? Yes.
I was just curious, as far as we're funding the engineering, what's the actual timeline of this project? If it's, you know, right now, we're just looking at the engineering piece of what we can do.
Right now, it's like five years old. Is it this potential, if we appropriate the money and we get this project going in terms of design, it may boost us up on the list if another community, if another project is passed over or whatever, or maybe...
Just to clarify, by committing to do the design work now, it keeps us a spot on the TIP. TIP is a five-year program, and right now, they're programming out to FY '23. This project would be in their sights for FY '23. The caveat, though, is that, relatively speaking against other projects on the TIP, this is a very low-cost project for Mast Dot. Typically, their projects go well into 20 million and more for bigger projects. Oftentimes, things fall off the TIP because they're not ready with design, they're not ready with permitting, whatever, and when that happens, they look to reprogram money. If they have something that's on the project list a little further down the road, and it's ready in design-wise, they'll move it up. You'd have a chance to move up before FY '23 if we had our design work done, but if we don't have any design work done, we could be knocked off the list altogether. So the vote tonight is really about keeping your place on the list so we can continue to move the project forward, understanding that there are other questions that still need to be answered. But if you say no, we could fall off the TIP. We were warned in December to make sure that we started moving this project forward. We've been to the NPO a couple of times, and trying to keep the project moving, so.
The point is that we have time, so if we know that there's a couple of things underground, we might need to, yes, that we could also start planning for potentially funding that one, and it wouldn't be a surprise.
Absolutely.
One last thing, it's not a couple of things underground, I just wanted, if you're going to commit to engineering this project, you've got to commit to fixing this infrastructure within the next few years, because if, like Joe says, something does come off the, you know, project list, and we are open up to potentially get into it, you have over a year of infrastructure work to do.
I'm going to suspend the rules only because Joe is knowledgeable.
Joe, this is exactly the right conversation and the right set of questions to ask, so, yeah, it is EFI. I think I would encourage the town to do a couple of things. One is to push aggressively at Mast Dot during the designing process to see whether or not, since you're going to go and put a whole new base here and a resetting of the current line, whether or not they would fund partially some of the stormwater runoff in that area. Maybe not all of it, but you might get some contribution from there. Also, we need to get engaged utilities early, because you want to get in their capital program early, so I think, I think what Director Callow described, it's a pretty complicated set of processes, but being able to get there so that by the end of five years, it's all done, I think is, should be the goal. If we can get a better deal out of Mast Dot, all the better, in terms of helping with some of the cost or the water-related items, and get National Grid to come in faster and get this on the capital program, and we think in the five-year period, this whole thing will come together nicely.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions?
Just that, this project has probably been on our board since Linda Callow and Paul Veroni brought it up six years ago, and we were working to getting this done. I think now's the time to finally pass this money, get the project started by getting the engineering done. So I ask you to vote yes for it.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes.
Just to clarify, again, my understanding is, and if I'm wrong, I hope to be wrong, but my understanding is it is a five-year project, but it could be, we could be called up, or it's a relatively small project, we could be called up in a couple of years. Is that true?
It's possible, but we need to get engineering done. We can't get called up, we can't do anything without it.
You can also decline. In other words, if they say, oh gee, we get money in year three, but we're not ready because of all the coordination of all the underground stuff, you can stay in year five. So they may call you up early, if you're ready earlier, you can go, but if it takes us five years to do the engineering and then some of the preliminary work underground, meaning that you still do the construction in year five, you can choose to stay in year five. So you will have flexibility, perhaps to accelerate, but certainly not to delay.
Okay, so that was my, so we do have the option to stay in year five. And we are basically saying, I think Director Callow would like us to say, not tonight necessarily, but if we do take advantage of this, we probably would take the time to replace the infrastructure that's needed underground. So this does end up being a capital project, but Mr. Aiello is saying that we can wait if we choose to until 2023.
As long as you start the engineering now, we want year five in place.
Anyone else wish to be heard? There are none, I'll take a roll call.
Councilor Remen.
Yes.
Councilor Callow.
Yes.
Councilor Christopher.
Yes.
Councilor Lutteiri.
Yes.
Councilor Soto.
Yes.
Councilor McGuffey.
Yes.
Councilor LaCanti.
Yes.
Vice President Boncory.
Yes.
President Vecchia.
Yes. Next item, town council to fund $10,000 for the Beacon Light improvements. I understand we had some good news on that this evening?
We had a conversation with the Mast Dot authorities. They will, waiting for paths to be delivered, and they'll have employees over to rectify any problems with the water power at their expense, and no charge to the town. Did ask Finance to keep it on their radar, just in case anything falls through, you wouldn't have to go back, you can go in quicker. I anticipate that to be the case.
Town council adopt a new council rule that requires all finance motions to be accompanied by supporting documentation as described in the attached document titled expenditures and transfer memo. Anybody like to be heard on this motion?
Yeah. Councilor President, a motion has come out of Rules and Ordinance Committee to amend the town of Winterp, town council rules, and the motion is that the town council adopt a new council rule 12D that requires all finance motions to be accompanied by supporting documentation, not limited to, but including background information, cost-benefit analysis, funding source, stakeholder concerns, and appropriate attachments.
Okay, it's out of committee, does not need a second. Any discussion on the motion? Yes.
Is there an exception if it's an emergency repair, an emergency need, is there some sort of exception?
Well, emergency situations can always pass in one vote. But I think we still have to have the accompanying material.
Council?
Yeah, I can respond to that. The motion certainly doesn't include an exception for emergencies, and I think even when we do have an emergency, it's still appropriate that we have a package of written information together to support the expenditure or the transfer. You know, perhaps it's not as extensive, or it is supplemented over time, but we've still got to get the information pulled together.
Okay. Anyone else wish to be heard? There are none, take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
We need a call.
Call the rule.
Councilor Remen.
Yes.
Councilor Callow.
Yes.
Councilor Christopher.
Yes.
Councilor Lutteiri.
Yes.
Councilor Soto.
Yes.
Councilor McGuffey.
Yes.
Councilor LaCanti.
Yes.
Vice President Boncory.
Yes.
President Vecchia.
Yes.
Well, the president, in accordance with that rule that we just passed, there was a policy that we would request the town manager to make out a form, which is in accordance with the memos that went out with this motion for expenditures and transfer memo, and to have that form attached to each motion. But that's just a request of the town manager.
Sure, make sure the department has included that, if anything needs to be submitted.
Okay, that the town council establish the Winterp Shoreline Resilvency Committee. We had a discussion.
Yeah, we passed on that until we get the advertisement.
Okay, so we'll table that. And here we are back on the Winterp Middle School site, three zones. Councilor Lutteiri.
It was a fantastic forum that you held a couple of weeks ago, and we had a lot of information back and forth. Whatever we do, whenever we do it, everybody isn't going to be happy with it. I would like to see, and I don't know if I can form it in the form of a motion, but I would like to see the rink and the gymnasium taken off the table for this project. I would also like to see, I would also like to request that the town manager draft an RFP if anyone might be interested, because we did hear that...
an RFP if anyone might be interested, because we did hear that, which, a meeting that I attended along with town manager and the council president, that there is potentially a developer interested in potentially putting units in the existing middle school. I would like to see, and again, it might work, it might not work, but I would like to request an RFP to see how serious this individual is and if it's something that we would be interested in. But I do, I, I listened to the comments on the rink earlier, how they're losing the Boston Blades, and that was not for the locker room facilities that they were offered, but they have teams from China, from Canada, and there is no facilities for the incoming teams. The visiting teams have no facilities, have no showers to speak of, have no room to stretch out and such. We've had authorization from the council three years back now to build an additional four locker rooms, which would be built by the rink and paid for out of the enterprise fund, um, which would have very potentially prevented an incident like this where we lost an extremely profitable and, and very good tenant. But obviously, the, the rink does not wanna go out and spend money if there was a thought or concern that their building might be torn down, and so, at this stage, and I think we have a, we have a pox and recs department that's, really doesn't have a home, and I think by taking the gym and the rink off the purview of that parcel in our discussions, it gives us the ability to have a home for the pox and rec, to let them continue what they do best, and it also gives the ability to the rink to finally build the locker rooms needed to fully facilitate that, um, that endeavor. So, I would recommend that, I don't know if you'd like it in the...
So, is that a form of a motion?
It would be a motion, yes.
So, there's a motion to take out...
I would like to make it in two motions.
Two motions.
A motion to take out the rink and the auditor, and the gymnasium.
Okay, that's motion number one, from the Winthrop Middle School site. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do I hear a second on that motion? Hearing none, the motion is lost.
Okay, the second motion? No, the second motion is to request that the town manager, which I don't even believe we have to request, the town manager, I believe, has the authority to put out an RFP if they, if he or she would like, but I would like to request that the town manager puts out an RFP, um, so we can dwindle down and puts out an RFP for, for potential reuse of the middle school site, um, as is.
Do I hear a second on that motion? Hearing none, the motion is lost. Councilor Zer.
I, I think, you know, may, maybe we're skipping a step here, and it's been brought up a number of times about what that site is actually worth, and I think what we should be going after here at this point is finding three different firms to give us an evaluation of what that site is worth to a developer before we actually put it out there, because I don't think we have... The last time we did an estimate in the EDCAC was a year and a half ago, and the housing market has exploded since then. So, we have an old estimate that we're sitting on, we have no idea how much that asset is worth, and potentially, that is the deficit which we need for several of these other capital improvements we're looking at if we sell that building. So, I, I think the proper thing to do here is to... Motion to get three estimates...
This committee can do it.
...of what that property is actually worth before we put out an RFP.
Do we need a motion?
I, I don't think you need one. I think the committee, as an investigative committee, the C committee that's working on it can, well, it needs those on its own without...
They don't have a funding source.
Or a motion.
They don't have a funding source.
Yeah.
Just a funding source. The committee should bring forward their funding source for that three estimates if they're gonna be charged to have an evaluation done.
So, you're gonna have to come back with it.
Do I hear a second on the motion?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not clear about the...
No, you're gonna, you're gonna have to come back with a motion with the price on it then. I mean, we can't just vote on a motion and spend money without knowing what it is. And the situation we have now, still...
So, why don't we put a motion out there to proceed to get three, let's say, three prices?
Three evaluations of the, of the value of that parcel, because, again, you don't really know what it is worth.
Right, but can the committee do that evaluation or speak to some firms and get us a price of what it would cost to have them come in, then come in with a month, a motion for the money, knowing what it is from those, those three people, uh, so that we know what we're voting on, and you have a financial amount?
I, I, I agree with that one, but now we're getting back into that situation which we talked about before, where we had multiple committees looking at this. So, which committee are we, are we asking to get the three estimates from? That's what I'm, that's what I'm wondering.
The council committee, I mean, the, the council committee on...
Subcommittee on Economic Development?
Yes.
Then, yes, then that makes sense for me.
But we have another situation, since, this is talking about rezoning that area. We've had a motion before us to do that for the past six months. It went to the planning board because the planning board has to overview every rezoning situation, and they have to come back to us. They came back to us about three months ago with a statement that said they're looking at as a modified center business district, but they didn't give us their definition of a modified center business district, so we have not done anything to rezone that yet. So, there's no zoning on it right now at all, as far as I'm concerned.
Right, I mean, and, I mean, in, in what we are asking for, we could always ask those people giving us the valuation, if it is zoned as X, what is it worth? If it's zoned as Y, what is it worth?
Absolutely.
And then we have, we have a much better idea of what assets we have, before we just throw it out to the, to the world and say, you know, what will you give this? I mean, yeah, there's been people who've looked at it, but we don't have a current valuation of what that is actually worth, to know what we're giving away.
Council?
Thank you, I, I agree. I, I also think, though, um, we need to get a better sense of what our goals and our objectives are for that property before we try to talk about zoning, because depending on what our goals are for how, what that property is gonna do for us, we, we are going to wanna zone it differently. And I think we probably need to do that, decide on some of the zoning aspects of it or some of the use aspects of it before we try to get a valuation on it. And so, you know, I don't know if it makes sense to refer this to the Economic Development Subcommittee for a report back on goals and objectives with this property, but, but I think we've gotta get the goals and objectives before we can make any other meaningful decisions about precisely how to use the property.
Mr. President?
Yes. I'm happy to evaluate this, and I think that it definitely needs to be hashed out more. I think that the big cog in the wheel right now is that, um, we need to get the, I know an RFP was put out to study the use for the public safety building, and we were given a timeline on that, and I think we're at about the end of that timeline. I'd like to see what the findings were for the public safety, or whatever the report came out with, to see if that's a viable site. Um, you know, and this has been something that we considered in that committee before, I'm willing to do it again, but the reason why we punted on this before was because we didn't have that information. I'd like to have that information before we assess this again, um, and I think that that's gonna be a critical piece in our decision.
Okay.
I, I agree with that, that's right on.
So, you will, you will take the ball, and this will contact the chief, see if we can get an update on exactly where he stands?
Yeah.
Okay? Yes.
The dog park location we put off, town manager search. Uh, we have begun over a month ago to reopen up the town manager's search. For those of you who do not know, the town charter states it very simple, that the town council president appoints the town manager, period. What we have done, my previous town council president formed a search committee to meet more transparent, I carried on that, that committee. They have been working diligently, they'll be meeting tomorrow night to review some candidates, but it's, it's, we've, you know, we're working on it through the calling center as we did before. We've also received, uh, I've received several resumes myself, and I've passed on to the committee. So, the committee will do their due diligence, uh, they'll make some recommendations, and we'll go from there. But we'll try to be as transparent as possible through this whole process, because we think it's the right thing to do.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And just, because I think there was a question at the, at the public comment at the beginning about the transparency of the town manager's search, and we've conducted two town manager searches since over the last twelve years, and both of them, you, you get a, a number of applicants in, they streamline them down, obviously, these people for the most part have jobs and, uh, you know, reluctant to get too public with it. When you do get down to the finalists, they're, they're notified that the, the applicants are notified that when we get down to the three finalists or whatever we decide, you will be interviewed on public television, it will become public, your employers will eventually, you will find out about it. So, it is kept confidential as to who has applied for their own safety, uh, but once it has come down, both times we have done it, we have had CAT tape the interviews for the three finalists, and I would suspect that that would continue.
That will happen again. Okay. New business, I think the only new business we have are the three motions?
Yes. Motion, three motions coming from the town manager. First motion is to move that the town council transfer five thousand nine hundred dollars from the reserve fund appropriation to the police department budget for personnel to cover the costs associated with recent settled union agreement or take any other action there too. I would ask for a motion to refer to finance.
Show move.
Okay. All those in favor?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
On the votes?
Second motion, move that the town council transfer forty-nine thousand two hundred dollars from the reserve fund appropriation to the fire department budget for the purpose of funding negotiated union pay increases or take any other action there too. Motion?
Motion refer to finance.
All in favor?
Second.
Second?
In second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose?
And a motion that the town council transfer twenty-three thousand eight hundred dollars from the reserve to the DPW department budget for the purpose of funding the negotiated union pay increase or take any other action there too.
Motion refer to finance.
Second. Anybody?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? The ayes have it.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I just have one more item for new business, um, and I just ask that it gets sent to TSAC. I've had a couple of different, even before tonight, issues with the corner of Pleasant Street and Somerset. I've, there's been an accident that I know of, and there's been a couple of other near misses from what I've heard. If we could send that to TSAC to identify any ways we can eliminate that problem, that would be great.
Pleasant Street one?
And Somerset F.
Pleasant and Somerset?
Could you just send me an email?
Sure.
Put it on your agenda?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other new business?
Yeah, I, I think in lieu of some of the discussion, and again, us sort of being continually stuck in the midst of some of these infrastructure projects and the idea of others coming down, I just wanted to ask that there's a discussion to fund a full-time planner position in the next budget cycle, um, because I really do think that we need that professional help to get these things moving. There's a lot of opinions about what's going on, and yet we still don't have a person on the town payroll who actually does this every day for their job, and I do think that that is such a critical piece to make sure that we get this right, is to have a professional look this over.
Can I inform the motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that, that funding a full-time planner in next year's budget is part of, um, our discussion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
If I tease my counsel, I wish to put that off to the next meeting, please.
I'm sorry, what was that?
He's using, he's using his privilege.
Okay, okay. I just got here, thank you.
Dismissed that to the next meeting. Any further new business? Okay, public comment?
Deputy Attorney, please. Um, in the process of listening to the budget being presented, uh, the comment was made, and maybe I'm misinterpreting it, that sixty-five percent of our revenue came in from our income taxes, which is residential properties. Okay? There's been quite an argument back and forth about how to develop the property. Well, I'm all in favor of recognizing and respecting our town services, but I also feel the way you folks are spending money with all due respect, that if we could take a piece of valuable property, i.e. the middle school, and put that into a residential development that would yield ongoing income, then we have a window of opportunity to go out, and we have one major, major dire need, and that's to address the infrastructure. And I mean, you're not going anywhere unless you fix your pipes and you clean up your streets. My other issue is, that I'd like to ask the council to be considered, you talk about the rink, you talk about the need for the visiting teams, for the youngsters that are down there, you talk about the tennis courts adjacent to the high school. You're taking the tennis courts and you put them up to the adults up in Ingleside Park, and they're lovely, and I understand there's a battle out over who gets a key and who doesn't. Okay, fine. Your youngsters are representing your town, their town, their sport, their desire to move ahead. They could turn around and they could have a visiting team come in and go in and use a bathroom, go in and have a facility right close to them. If those courts up at the high school across the street, I'm certainly sure that those provisions will be made available to the visiting team as well as to our own young people. And I would strongly suggest that you really consider, these are our youth. Consider them. Make sure that they know they can step out from their school and they can go in a competitive spirit or in a team-like practice spirit, and they have those facilities waiting and ready for them.
Hi, Kathleen Pugio, forty-nine, Walton, Marap. I'm just gonna read, and I apologize, I didn't print this out. So, Mr. Jim McKenna, who was our former town manager and is now a consultant for our town, who, and please correct me if I'm wrong, um, is still being paid the same salary that he was as a town manager, and also, even though he'll be off the job for a year, he will be able to collect unemployment afterwards, which is really not in the norm. Those, that was negotiated, just to preface, by our current town council, um, so I'm not looking to throw stones here, but just to point those two facts out. These are Mr. McKenna's words. This was in an email outlining, I guess I would say, his, his, what his job responsibility was going to be as a, as a consultant. Assist the town manager with any matter of concerns that may arise for which additional counsel and assistance is necessary, with particular assistance regarding fiscal, borrowing, or budgetary matters. Number two, assist the town council with any matter under its purview, whereas the town council requires advice and background. We have had, this evening in Mr. Vecchia's forum that we have in CBD, very, and middle school reviews, two very important meetings that this consultant has not been present I do not understand why we are still paying this gentleman. I believe, and I could be wrong, his contract expires at the end of May. I have been to many meetings over the past two months that he has not been present at, and his, I think it was a five-point, his email was a five-point description of what he was going to do, has not been involved. This current town council in Terry frankly is dealing with the remnants of the past, and I, and some people wanna say you can't look at the past, let's just move forward. You know what? You have to look at the past. If you don't look at the history, you can't correct it in the future. I do not understand why this gentleman is still being paid. He is not meeting what he said he was going to do, and I'm just baffled. Our CFO, and I'm sorry, it's his first name, was talking about how he couldn't outline, you know, what the capital expenditures might be, which then Mr. Del Ante said were in, in the millions, because he doesn't have the accounting software, or, and this, these are my words, the bandwidth, the employees, to be able to put that information together. Then what is Mr. McKenna doing? Why are we paying two town managers right now? It's un... It's unacceptable. Thank you.
One of the great things about being somebody retired is you get to discuss a whole bunch of things about me. Let me, number one, just make sure that I was a member of the middle school reuses committee, and Mr. McKenna was made available to us by the previous town president to attend those meetings. He came to one meeting and he failed to show up at every other meeting since then. So if you're looking for violation of contract terms, there's one right there. So I'm supportive of that general notion that you guys inherited, but you know what, I feel free to be able to testify about his failure to show up. A quick thing on TSAC, while you're talking to about that dangerous intersection, one of the other things I do is drive around town and notice that, and I sort of blame sort of MWR-ish vehicles, but it could be ourselves, there is not one stop, there's not one speed limit sign from the moment you turn onto Washington Street down by Shirley Street, all the way until you get to Main Street, in either direction. And as a sort of like crumbly old guy on Saturday trying to go down to the bank and taking my laundry to the cleaners, these cars are going by at like, they gotta be going 50 miles an hour, and I know that should be marked as a 25 or 30 mile an hour mark. So let's get some speed limit signs up there. The repaving that National Bridge did was fine, but they paved over the remnants of the crosswalks, so you can't, a car can't even see a crosswalk anymore. This is what I mean about attention to detail, that National Bridge should be compelled to come back and repaint the crosswalks, right? They paved over them, that's part of your business. Let me add to a more complicated issue, which is this middle school site. I want to get back to sort of Director Calla's discussion from two weeks ago, where he stated quite emphatically that a consideration of power, sewer, water supply, drainage with respect to any reuse of the middle school site, which has not yet been integrated into the overall infrastructure plan. So one of the things, no matter what we're gonna do there, there's gonna need to be a set of upgrades. When I keep saying we don't know what the cost of the infrastructure is gonna be, that's a big piece of mystery, that I do think there needs to be a serious study about what those needs might possibly be, and therefore what the investment might be. Let me tie back, go to some possibly better news. One is that we did get a $3 million grant on the Mass Works, the town did. They applied for it a little bit prematurely, and they didn't really know the project, but it was based on the premise that this young lady described, that there could be some significant housing on that site to generate revenue, but it's also consistent with the state policy of trying to get more housing developed within 128, because that's where the jobs are. As you're looking at the site, and looking at housing opportunities on the site, the more housing opportunities you're looking on the site, the more likely Mass Works is to look favorably on us, to file an amended Mass Works application. Add in request for demolition of part of the facility at the Mass Works price, cost, to be able to create a foundation for future housing development that makes it more economical, therefore you can yield a great return to the, to the town. You can also get them to add in the cost of that incremental utility work to support housing in that site. This is exactly what Mass Works was created for, and this is their own priority. So I would ask the committee to sort of think about that housing relationship, and how it can be used to bring in additional state dollars into the town if possible. And then one other dimension of that that I think I'm forgetting, and maybe I'll return. Anyone else?
I've got to get some comments before Joe remembers what he forgot. Couple of things. First, I feel like I can take a comment about the previous town manager. I just want to thank very much the previous speaker who raised this. Many of us were puzzled about why he continues to be paid, because it's clearly he's not showing up at meetings. It seems as though there is an apparent violation of the contract, and just as Mr. Jaiel gave you an example, I'm also happy to provide town council a number of examples relative to our community work, if that would be helpful. So just wanted to make that comment. Secondly, on the town meeting search, thank you Council President Vecchio for the transparency and making a commitment to have the three finalists, you know, yet again, hopefully come before the public and have those interviews being available to the public and teams, and have it be an accessible process like that. I think it would be also helpful to give a clear mandate to the selection committee, and almost more importantly, a clear mandate to the new town manager for change. I think there are a number of issues and sort of broken systems, and I would hope that that's transmitted, that kind of message is transmitted to the new town manager when that person's hired. Third, I couldn't agree more about the need for a planner. I want to thank whoever made that motion and seconded it. You know, it's crystal clear that a lot of the issues that we're dealing with, if we had a full-time professional planner, we could address them, with also an experienced town manager with a mandate, I think we could address a lot of these things. So I would strongly urge that council, I know it's been postponed for the moment, but strongly urge the council to adopt that motion to hire a permanent, full-time town planner. On the middle school, I also believe and agree that we should get some estimates of value, so thank you for that. And it's terrific and important to establish goals before you can zone it. You know, we would get some estimates of value, establish goals, rezone it. People will be reluctant to bid on it if it's not rezoned. Rezoning it will increase its value, so we're gonna get much more return from the town if we do that, and then put on RFP. It might be personnel who says, I can, you know, put housing in the existing building. I'm sure that's a case we have heard that a few times before, but, you know, it would be great to get organized, put on RFP, and then really advertise that heavily, and do outreach to, you know, great specialists and to all, you know, to folks who do housing. Mr. Jaiel is correct that Mass Works, there's a lot of money available through Mass Works to help with the infrastructure, and that program is largely their, is their part to support housing that's needed in the Commonwealth. There is a September 1st, I think it is, application for Mass Works. We should hopefully, you know, be able to work toward applying for another, I would say, much more significant Mass Works grant, to be able to take care of a lot of the infrastructure needs on that side, and I think also to get more money from the CBD as we decide, you know, how to look forward on that. And lastly, I would just request, and I wasn't here for the opening public comment, I think that there were written comments made on this topic, but I would request that there be a statement issued by town council adopting a zero tolerance policy toward discrimination. You know, we have a history of issues, and that does feel as though our silence is deafening. We do need leadership from town council on this. I think that would be the case in other communities. It's not personal, it's not about any case, it's about our town values. And I think we should get right out there as soon as possible. I would strongly urge town council to take a vote on a statement of zero tolerance right away. Thank you.
Come on, come on. How many charges you getting, Joe?
Sorry, ladies and gentlemen, but you're here for a few more minutes in only Italian. However, I want to make clarification on using the ferriest emergency evacuation vehicle. That is true, only if it's in the season. If we have an emergency evacuation in the winter, the ferry is not here, it cannot be used as an evacuation vehicle. I have worked with the evacuation committee that is doing an evacuation group up and down the coast. That vehicle is not seaworthy enough to sail in the winter, so it cannot be used as an emergency evacuation vehicle. However, we will be working with the private boating community. It's one of the things on our emergency preparedness program, to see if something happened during the summer, we had to get people offshore, that perhaps we can encourage the private sector of boaters to be part of our emergency evacuation team. So that is one thing. The other thing I want you to make sure you understand, because I have a sense, I have a sense that some decisions in your mind have already been made up, and I see that middle school already being prepared for apartments or condos. Remember this, when you put people in a building and something happens, who are the first people you call to evacuate them? You're gonna be putting more responsibility on a safety team that you're not even willing to give them a building to work out of. We've talked about a lot of things, money, et cetera, but the low people on the totem pole, as far as I can see, and I'll bet there's people in the community who watch this, you put your safety people on the bottom of the list. We're still talking about a rink in that area, we're talking about recreation in that area, but we're not talking about safety. And to, that is very disappointing to me, it's almost insulting. To address discrimination, I've worked in this town a long time. I've worked with all kinds of people, from all kinds of races, from all kinds of religions. We've done evacuation work with people in Governor's Park, or from all different ethnic groups. I've worked in different categories. I don't think there's discrimination in this town. I'm very proud of the people in this town. They have a very open mind, they're willing to help their neighbors, doesn't matter who you are, what you are, what you believe, or anything. We are a very open, non-discriminatory town. Thank you.
All right, that's right. Oh, John. Don't call Joe again. He's talking too much.
I'd just like to respond briefly to Councilor Christopher's comments about TSAC and the problems that he's shown on Somerset Avenue and Southern Street. About a month and a half ago, I appeared at the TSAC to present to the TSAC that particular location in other, identical to the email that I sent to all members of the council meetings. I hope that you all, that you all see. And I put this on the TSAC agenda, and it was told by the TSAC that they would respond to me in some way, shape, or form. I came up with a number of recommendations of that night, including Somerset, and I haven't received any, no, at all, follow from TSAC, with respect to the presentation that I made. And that's somewhere, that is kind of discouraging to me. I'll go back to the TSAC again, I've done a little bit of presentation planning in my life, and one, some of the things that I tried to present to the TSAC were a number of low-cost, you know, improvement to the town's, you know, harnesses, similar to the ones that Joe just presented, in terms of improving safety with the speed limit site and other things, that could be done, and that would be done in other towns around the winter, which is not good. So that was about a half ago, and I haven't even received a courtesy of a response at all. Not only to me, but it's, I think that's...
They meet once a month, Joe, and the meeting is tomorrow?
Well, I don't know if I can make it tomorrow.
No, I'm just saying, whatever, whatever happened last meeting, it was the recommendation.
No, no, this was not just the last meeting, this was the meeting before.
You said a month, a month and a half ago?
It was about a month ago, I forget the exact date, I was there, so, like, Councilor Christopher was actually there.
That was the last meeting.
Right, and that was last meeting. And maybe recommendations, and that was about a month.
I understand, you made the recommendation. If they're considering those recommendations, and they didn't vote that meeting, there'd be no recommendation coming forward from me. So they're meeting tomorrow, and I'm sure that we'll get something from them as soon as they have a chance to vote on it, and move it forward.
Okay, and then, how did that get, how did that information get transmitted to the council? For example?
Through my office.
How did that get to them?
Their recommendation comes to me, and I voted to the council. If it's an order of exchange, the county jurisdiction would send it to rules and ordinance.
Okay.
If it's an operational decision, then we'd deal with it on an operation level.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else? Joe?
Cool.
I never remember what else to say, but, just two things. One is, I think it's important to reinforce Lisa Alvegini's notion of the need to make a statement about values, because it just costs us over $5 million. At minimum, that behavior's gonna change. But second, I wanted, which is probably reinforce that everybody here is doing, you guys are volunteers, you're here late at night, you're here at other meetings. We do this out of a commitment to make you folks successful, and hopefully you're taking it that way. I hope you don't take us as just criticizers, but you've got a big support of everybody who shows up at these meetings, that really want to work with you and help get this town to a better place, because it really does need to get to a better place. So I hope you take my comments, everybody else's comments, and that, for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Nick Seo's precinct five, just I'd like to put down a few points of information. I'm very concerned about what I've heard at the last two meetings about Mr. McKenna. I was not aware of this. I know Mr. Oser brought it up, I think, in the March meeting, asked about Mr. McKenna, directed his question to Mr. Del Ante, Mr. Del Ante directed it to President Vecchio. President Vecchio said he was under the direction of Ross Hambrich. To me, this is unacceptable as well. Mr. McKenna's imprint is all over what is going on in our town, whether you're pro-development or you're not. Mr. McKenna, the town manager, when every single ordinance was changed and they logged without participation from a resident, and a butter, or a neighbor, that process is wrong. Something impactful like that should have had a forum, like Mr. Vecchio did a couple of weeks ago for the whole town, positive step transparency. What Mr. McKenna did was, on his own volition, shut down Hagman Road, again, without much notification. That was supposed to be something that lasted 62 days. You saw what happened there. There was a revolt. 750 signatures to open that road. The Boston Globe covered that issue. Mr. McKenna was directly responsible for that, as well as Adams Street. It was a right decision they did to keep it one way. Mr. McKenna has been on full salary. I've been coming to these meetings for eight months. I have not seen him at one meeting. I do not know what his salary is, but I know one thing, people in this town are working four jobs to survive. Our taxes are going up, people are scared. Our tax rate is above $14 now, okay? We've seen people paying $6,800, $8,300, $9,000, $10,000 on their homes. People are afraid that the tax rate could go to $20. And Mr. McKenna is sitting in Manchester Essex on full salary. You're all honest people on there, and I really believe in your hearts that you cannot accept this. I hope that something is done about this. The last thing I want to mention is this, the residents gave you a quality-of-life presentation that discussed everything that's been brought up here tonight. We have to really look at what we want to do. I know there's a budget that might be $4 million, but what about the people on Morton Street right now? I know somebody that just got into their house. Can we use some of that money that supposedly all go into the CBD for the Morton Street residents? They pay their taxes. How about Pico Park? Everybody in here knows what happened down there. People have been flooded out of their house twice. Why don't we do what Citu did? Raise a cement wall, use some of that CBD money, instead of everybody going down the set-up, and let's raise the wall there three feet. It'll make a big difference to those people. They're paying flood insurance, they're paying the regular insurance. I'm very concerned about people in this town who've been there a long time, being pushed out because of the number of things that are being, going on simultaneously into town, and I really hope that we study the entire process all over again. And the last thing I want to talk about is, I'm a Boston Public School teacher, I did it for 37 years, and I work with all types of ethnicities. Winter is a diverse town, it has always been a diverse town. I have been here pretty much my entire life, I played with an African-American in my starting lineup in basketball, I played with a full-blood Cherokee Indian, I played with Italian kids, Irish kids, Swedish, you name it. We are a very diverse town. I don't really like some of the things I hear, I just want to go quickly into a little history. Jackie Robinson was the first African-American to be signed in the major leagues. Playing with him, triple A for Brooklyn Dodgers, was Milton Ballmer Neal from Winter, Massachusetts, okay? This town has always been an open town. This town has always been an open town, it's been a town that people help each other and their neighbors, and I hope that people really look at it the way Mr. Modjoe said. Thank you.
Anyone else was to be heard?
Me.
Do you have to go up there?
No, I don't, do I have to? I'll, I'll talk right here. You know, we hear the concerns, and a million concerns surrounding this town. And I've been on the council since the very beginning, and every council that's ever come on to this council has come on as a volunteer, basically, because we don't get paid very much money at all to do this. But we do it, and we do it because we love Winthrop. And every single council that I've met has been on this council since the beginning, has cared about the town, and has tried to be transparent, and has tried to put things out there for the benefit of the town. And when I hear people talk about, oh, there's no more trust in, in the town, there's no more trust in the leaders, it really offends me. It offends me because we come here with the love of the town, and we work for the town for nothing, to make it a better place. I think we've made some mistakes with our former government, and being on the charter commission, I can admit, we made a big mistake. We should have never made a powerful town manager. We should have had a mayor, because that mayor would have lived in Winthrop, would have cared about Winthrop, and you could have got rid of him if he didn't produce in four years. There wouldn't have been a contract, that you have to follow a contract. We've had four people as town manager, two of them from out of town, and two of temporary ones were from in-town. And the ones that were from in-town cared ten times more than the ones from out of town. And we had problems with both the out-of-town ones, but not with the interims that were from-town. So if you can go get seven hundred and fifty signatures, go get a bunch more, and let's have another charter commission, and let's change things and get it right this time.
Anyone else was to be heard? Public relations. Saturday night, if you're not doing anything, CASA lost their funding, as many people know. They're having a fun laser at the Neil Shapiro Auditorium. Jimmy Tingles, is that his name? He's a comedian.
Tingles.
It's twenty-five dollars, I think, a ticket. It's eight o'clock at the Neil Shapiro Center on Saturday night. On 423 Precinct Two, there'll be a community meeting at six o'clock at the E.B. Newton Lyceum. And on 52 Precinct Four, we'll have a community meeting at six-thirty at the E.B. Newton School. So, other than that, ladies and gentlemen, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. So move. All in favor?
Aye.